Alright, good evening everyone. I would like to start the uh the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation meeting. Uh it is approximately six oh five um and I would like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance if you don't mind. Um. There's no flag. Eric one, so sad.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
We just need to do this.
Yes.
One nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
You know, I'd like to do the Texas pledge.
On the Texas pledge, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Honor the Texas flag. Public education. Uh now we will move on to the next item on the agenda, uh Citizens Public Forum. Uh is there anyone that would like to speak this evening that has not submitted a uh comment card? Alright. I have uh Ms. Patricia Ebert.
Uh Patricia Ebert, one one five South Greenstone, Duncanville, seven five one one six. And I'm here to thank all of you board members, y'all are volunteers. You have certain professional skills that are highlighted, that's why you get appointed to this board. Your your job is very difficult. Every request you are asked to look at the best and the highest use. Unfortunately tonight, as in previous agendas, there are a couple of flaws in the agenda items and I know that in the past, the two agendas, the PIP, other items, y'all always made sure that it was corrected and that the law was fallen, so I appreciate you having to go that extra mile. And then I see on the agenda where you're looking for legal counsel. Um I support legal counsel for this board. I think that's a a a necess- a necessity at this point. I just questioned live from Sherman.
Ricky Fain.
I just wanted to introduce myself. I own the property between Wayland and Fountain Street. Uh front and back, which on Wayland and the fronts on Fountain Street. Gus Garcia uh contacted me in twenty three about doing a a project together with the city and the EDC. Uh city council approved funds to hire the architects to do those studies and get the renderings. Uh twenty four came along, finally got a city manager, that was great. Gus left shortly afterward, supposedly the contracts were at the attorney's office. Anyway, the architect drew up the sketches uh and uh I did not bring those because uh Victor Perez has all of that, he can I'm guessing you're gonna make it available to city council?
I am at a future meeting.
Okay, okay, and then the EDC board. Anyway, I'm still here and I'm still interested in the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mister Kenneth Goban?
Oh, that would be me, I'm gonna talk.
You want to talk during that?
During that section.
Portion that item, okay.
Yes.
Uh is there anyone else that would like to speak during the uh Citizens Public Forum portion of the meeting? No one else, alright. Move on to the next item on the agenda. Uh at this point, I'm seeking an appointment of uh a board president and seeking a board a motion and a second for an appointment of a board president to serve. That's my understanding, a two year term. Currently, we do not have the Mister Goban was the previous uh board president, his term has expired and thus we are needing to uh look for a replacement, someone to fill the pres- the role of president.
Director Brer, I'd like to make motion, we postpone this to later into the meeting if Mister Reed is not present because if he's nominated, do you want to be here accept or decline?
Uh unfortunately, Mister Reed will not be, is not able to attend this meeting. Um he had a family emergency. Uh we need to.
If you wish to move forward, then I'd like to nominate Mister Goff as president.
Second.
Sukka.
Accept Mister Goff.
I was quick.
I'm sorry. I will, I'll serve.
Okay, well in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well Sherman cares, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so um uh we'll do this, we'll do this together. Alright, alright, so the next item on the agenda is uh we're seeking an appointment of of members to serve on the bylaws committee. This is an item that we had previously discussed and we uh uh need to have a few members serve on the on a bylaws committee so we can look at the current bylaws and suggest amendments as needed on to make sure that the bylaws are in order and are in line with best practices of economic development corporations. Um at one point, it had been suggested that um that those that would serve or could serve on the committee would be president, vice president and a board member along with staff and with the assistance of the attorney. Uh wanna make sure that that's still the desire of the board and if so, um who would like to serve on this board? On this, excuse me, of the board on this uh bylaw committee? Yes.
Uh so you mentioned that uh according to the way this was structured, it was going to be correct, uh vice president and a member of the board?
It had been previously suggested that uh that it made sense for the president, vice president and a board member. But I'm open to the liking of the board, whatever the board wants to do.
The reason why I ask the question, uh Mister Obama, uh the vice president, he was vice president, so.
Mister Reed was serving as a capacity of the vice president.
Okay, I guess I'm not.
And I guess my question is, who is the vice president now?
Yeah, no, no one is vice president now.
Current.
Mr. Reed, Mr. Reed, Reed's the vice president, continues to serve as the vice president. Sir, is the vice president? Mr. Reed is the vice president.
Okay, alright, thank y'all.
No, no, I have good questions.
Yeah.
He would have, he would fill in as needed as as the president. But his role is vice president. I know um Mister Sukka has had expressed some interest in serving on the committee. Um I don't know if you, so I've expressed some, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
I have to say that that, my thoughts is for, we go for any board, you know, we still have one vacancy. If there is a desire to serve on a committee, it's important to refresh the bylaws. Want to, yeah, I feel like we could use the help.
Okay.
All the sort of ideas and money, so that shouldn't just be limited to.
No, and that's and that's fine, as I previously suggested, but I'm open to whatever the board wants to do. Just looking to work with a few board members to uh address several items, uh several sections of the bylaws and and bring forward recommendations to a future board meeting and to a future city council meeting. Yes.
Yeah, uh President Goff, that, one of the things you have to understand that if you have three members, please start your play. You're not required to have a forum with, I mean, before you have to post the meetings. If you have four members, you have to post the meetings. If you consider this an executive committee and it's that recommendation which you would accept or deny, then you would have to post the meetings. So the more involved the committee is, uh and what your expectations are, uh more transparent it has to be. So you're required to have to post those meetings, just so you understand.
Thank you, appreciate your question. Any volunteers?
Uh.
Got zilco.
Okay, anybody else?
Is Mister Reed, is Mister Reed gonna serve on there too?
Uh I haven't, I haven't spoken with him about serving.
When he's not here, see the point.
Well, it's current vice president.
How about, uh we'll run with that and if he, if he isn't able to
If he declines.
To serve, I know that he's also serving on the uh the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, so unless there's, you know, um just time commitments, so I guess we'll go back and ask for for another member. But we'll, we'll proceed with president, vice president and Mister Board Members Oak. Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Uh next item on the agenda, receive directors reports. Uh over the course of the last few weeks, I've been working with the MRB group, uh putting together proposals for uh for the board's consideration and city council's consideration. This is for preparing request for proposals for the disposal of city owned and corporation owned property. Um we will be bringing that uh forward at the next meeting for your review and consideration. This proposal is in line with the process that was outlined by the MRB group in that special meeting back in August. Um and we anticipate bringing in, bringing before you two uh two proposals for um corporation owned property. And uh we will get back, I know that in in the past, uh as part of the report, you had also received the certificate of occupancy reports and we will get back to providing you with those regular reports as well as a report of new uh businesses opening and you a report, a quick report of business visits as well. Uh that is all that I have at the time being.
Any questions, Goff, from Mister Brer, from staff?
Um five, uh item five, briefings and presentations, no action or deliberation will take place on any of these items, five A, comprehensive plan review. Uh just in your packet, I provided you the draft uh meeting minutes of the steering committee. Uh they met on September ninth, as well as a draft of the public engagement um strategy and also the project website outline. Uh in your packet, I also included the uh economic uh report that the steering committee has been asked to review, provide comments and will be discussed at the next uh steering committee meeting, which is, uh if memory serves me correctly, it's it's scheduled for next Wednesday at six o'clock. Wednesday, November sixth at six o'clock. Uh the loc- meeting location is uh yet to be determined, but I can share with that with you in case any board members are interested in attending the meeting. Um as I mentioned previously, uh uh Vice President Reed is a member of the steering committee. Uh that is all I have regarding the comprehensive plan uh review.
Any, any questions for Mister Brer or staff on this item? Yeah.
I hear. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. But the next, next item five B.
Okay. Item.
Okay, now, next item, five B is the special events update. Uh Ms. Day will be providing the board with with an update.
Yeah, it's not how, uh in the Yeah. For our five is approval of the minutes, which I think was the last.
Oh, okay. I got some old book.
That's, that's an old book, that's not, that's not the book for tonight.
Need that.
Five B is special events.
Not the items.
I'm like, I cannot see a five B.
Okay. Alright, so we're still in the briefing and presentations. This item is no action or deliberation. Also, item five B is special events update by Ms. Alicia Day.
Good evening, everyone. Uh today, I'm just gonna give you a quick briefing of uh the post briefing from Mexican Independence Day and update you on our upcoming event, uh special uh December sixth, Christmas. So um the post briefing is just to give you an idea. Okay, we'll do it. Just to give you an idea of some of the things that went on, Mexican Independence Day on September sixteenth. And we had, our city council members were there in force. We had a nice turnout of almost all the city council members um here. Uh we had vehicles donated by Clay Cooley and we had some of our um our citizens come out and allow our our city council members to be a part of in their uh in their vehicles for the parade. Uh Central Elementary came out and did uh ballet folklore and that was just an awesome, awesome turnout for that. They also, they danced and they were in the parade. Um we had the Mexican consulate uh uh from Dallas come out and perform El Grillo. Um it was a great sight to see all the people in the audience with their signage and just paying homage to their country. Um Solos Dunkinville is a group that's in Dunkinville and helps to educate and to help, they came out to decorate, to volunteer, uh to be a part of the celebration and they were also in the parade. We had a group from uh Dunkinville, Three Amigos Entertainment is made up of three gentlemen, one of which is a resident here in Dunkinville. And they own this entertainment company and they have been wanting to work with us here in Dunkinville for many, for many years and then um they got that opportunity. And one of these bands, all these bands are international bands and one of them from Manisia de La Rancho. Uh he is actually, he actually went to uh Dunkinville High School. So again, uh very excited to be able to perform for the city and they, and and he still lives here. Um and there's just some pictures from uh the bands playing. Citizens having a great time, we had a lot of people out there that night. Uh this was an event that started at four o'clock and went to about nine. Um you see, we had lots of vendors, we had a dance floor. Um the next day, I was overwhelmed with emails, so was our Facebook and our Instagram, was overwhelmed with positive comments from everyone just saying how much they enjoyed us celebrating our our citizens, our citizens, so they felt seen, they felt like they're a part of our community. There's another one. So Place Your AI puts about three point four six thousand people in the park on that Monday evening from four to nine P M. And Place Your AI is an analyst data, is analyst data collection uh software that we use to help gauge people coming in and out of our city. And it's, it just kind of pings your um your cell phones basically and gives us that data. So we use that to see who comes in and out of the city. And this just shows where people were coming from and where people went to, as you can see, most people came from home, which was right here in Dunkinville. And most people went right back home afterwards, after the event, which means they came here specifically, they came to Armstrong Park specifically to be a part of that celebration. Let me just get this way, okay, here we go. So the budget for this. My total expenses were thirty three thousand two hundred and four. I say roughly because we're, I think we're still looking at a couple of items. This includes staffing and everything, but I believe this is my pretty much, this is pretty close to the total that was spent. And then we raised um about sixteen thousand through sponsorships and uh the vendors who paid to be out here, the parade goers. Uh the sixteen thousand, by the way, this was raised, the fifteen thousand or fourteen seven fifty was raised in a matter of three weeks. Once people found out this was happening, they just wanted to give money. As a matter of fact, for Christmas, we've already had somebody call and say, hey, we want to be a part of your community, we want to be a part of your celebrations. So this just kind of shows that there are several companies and organizations who really want to be a part of our celebrations and part of our community and help celebrate. Any questions? This was a collaborative effort, just FYI, the entire, every department of the city had something to do with contributing to this event. So I mean, you had Parks and Rec, police, you had emergency services, you had uh staff, yeah, EDC staff. We had volunteers from the city of uh from uh Dunkinville High School, seniors came out, we had about thirty of those seniors that came out and helped. We had Solos Dunkinville came out, we had uh COPS, citizens on patrol came out and helped, so we had plenty, plenty of uh volunteers. Again, showing that this is something that they would like to see and want to be a part of. Uh for Christmas, um I don't have a presentation for you, but or do I? So for Christmas, I'll take this off. Yeah. This is still special events, this is still special events. So for Christmas, um we'd wanna make it um more for Christmas, we wanna make it just as nice as we did before. Um we have some special guests coming, some really very well known uh bands, that's wrong with someone, that's my Christmas. Uh we have some very well known bands coming in and like I said, we've already got uh two, one person's already sent money for, to be a sponsor. We've got the other one who has called out and said they want to be a sponsor. Uh we've sent out sponsorship package, uh spin out, sent out invitations for vendors. I've been fielding calls all day today, just for vendors. Um so we've got lots of vendors coming in from uh Grand Prairie, Mesquite, um right here in Dunkinville, they want to be part of our celebration. So um Christmas is um December sixth, twenty twenty four, is gonna begin right about six thirty. Um well, the parade will begin right about six thirty. Uh but the event, you'll get more information as we get closer to it, we're still trying to work out the the kinks to it, but uh yeah. Uh we are in the uh in the running for a a Santa, so if you know anybody who wants to volunteer to be a Santa for the park, let me know. Any questions?
Next question. Um are you gonna try to have a parade with lots of people encouraging to do lights?
Yes, because the, oh, the theme is um um holiday lights in the park. So the drone show from last year has been, as you know, city council approved to dunk last, that was gonna be even bigger. Uh lots of lights in the park, uh yes, lights on the parades.
Exactly.
Yes, and it's gonna be a longer parade route. So I knew one of the conversations from our after report, our after uh event meeting was that they wanted the parades to go through the downtown area so the businesses could participate in that, so I know the parade route will will go through downtown area. So it's gonna be a longer parade, a lot more people, more lights, because it's gonna be darker, so yes. And uh just FYI, we have been interviewing for uh a special events person, so hopefully that person will be on board very soon. So I'm just filling in for now. Any questions? Thank you.
So next up, we have five C, uh still in the briefings, right, this one, Retail Live, Austin.
So, uh earlier this year, I went to uh Retail Live in Austin and I made connections with several of the uh businesses there. These are people who are either the representatives of the franchise or they actually are the owners of the franchise. So the few that I met, um I made sure to, and the thing I like about Retail Live, I just wanna say is these people are either headquartered in Texas or they are looking to relocate in Texas. So these are the people that I have contacted, I have their cards, I have their contact information. They expressed some interest in moving to the Dallas Fort Worth area or to expand from the, in the Dallas, from the Dallas Fort Worth area. So Hibbit City Gear, um this is one that uh they, I asked them if they, if they uh brand local sports and of course, they said they do. So I just thought that might be an option as one. Um this is another big sporting, big by sporting goods. I will say, this is more of for general, they also brand, knowing that we have, you know, the Panthers. So that was just sporting goods, it's something I've heard people say they would like to see, I think it's something was mentioned before. Um then I saw two dining options, uh Black Bear Diner, I actually went to visit one up in North Dallas, it's one off seventy five. Uh but they are also looking for a smaller square footage and by the, by the way, all of these are looking for a smaller space, they don't need you know, larger spaces. Um so this is one that came in with, within our demographics. They're looking for the VP, uh the vehicles per per hour, the numbers, all of these that I'm showing you fit our demographics and fit what we have to offer. Uh the other diner that I found was Eggs Up Grill and both of these, by the way, are open all day, they do breakfast all day, lunch and dinner, so another dining option that I I I uh found. Uh Smalls Sliders, this one I thought was interesting because they only require a point three to point seven acres. And I know we have several small uh spots that don't require a lot of, uh don't, don't have anything on them and so they don't require a lot of space. So I thought that was an interesting uh concept and there's nothing like that on the side, there, there's not a Smalls on the side of town, that I know of. I didn't find one. Um Mister Gotti's Pizza, this was on here because Mister Aaron Farmer, who we had met at ICSC. Um he introduced uh me to the owner or to the representative uh for Mister Gotti's Pizza, because he knew of a property that we had available at the time, I don't think it's available anymore, I don't know. But he mentioned Mister Gotti's Pizza because it's family friendly with the um with the videos, pizza brings families out, things of that nature. So that's, I also met with them and that was, that's the people that I met with at uh Retail Live. Um and I will say that I would, I would definitely recommend us going back to Austin Retail Life because the people that are there are already in Texas, number one. They, they don't, we don't have to travel long, long ways to get to them. And uh they're actually looking for space here in the state of Texas and so if we could bring something unique to this area, that gives us an opportunity to meet with them head to head, through space. Any questions?
Question, is that? I mentioned Mister Farmer, is he with a retail connection still?
Yes, yes, he's with them.
Okay.
And the funny thing is, I actually met him in person at ICSC, but I had previously had a conversation with him because he had reached out to the EDC prior to us being here, um prior to even Gus being here. And uh so when I met him, he was like, yeah, we had reached out before. Um I see him everywhere, he's everywhere, but uh yeah, he's, he's still willing to, you know, work with us and help us in any way, shape or form, of course.
Has he initiated like, so I know that they work with cities, but they work with cities under formal agreements.
Yes.
So is that something you guys are entertaining or starting to engage in more?
Not at this time, we haven't, but it's something we need to.
I guess the last question there is, maybe seems like only the last two were maybe looking for build the soup sites, but the first group of uh end users, would they be willing to consider it, maybe existing vacant uh properties that we have that, you know, just looking for tenants?
Yes, like Hibbit, um Hibbit City, they're looking for various location types, sporting goods they are too. Um this one um as well, but they're looking for a larger footprint, but we do have a space available in one of the shopping centers. Same thing for this one, we have a site available, so they're looking for a neighborhood center and we do have something available for that one. Smalls, we've got those, I was specifically thinking of a very specific place for that one, I can see it in my head, but I won't say anything, but um they want to build out and they use the container kind of look to it, but as you see, point three, point seven acres, all they need, not even a full acre. Um but uh yeah, so if you guys want us to move forward, I think we'll just.
No, if I may, if I may, uh typically at these, it's not uncommon that at these conferences, the attendees are provided with a list of retailers, end users and their site requirements. The, those that were presented uh to you this evening are ones that have been selected, we think might be a good fit for some of the spaces and some of the sites that we have. Uh but there's just oftentimes, it's uh, it's a book, it's a book of end users with their uh site requirements, traffic count requirements, uh disposal income, all of that and you know what, oftentimes uh either economic development specialist and or uh brokers look at site and try to match up the right site, the right property uh with those requirements. So these that were presented to you were just uh identified that they might be a good fit for some of the sites and locations that we have uh in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item, item six, we have received and discussed the following reports. We start with A, the D C E C monthly budget report, September two thousand twenty four.
Uh yes, thank you, good evening. So what I provided in your packet is what we've done in the past, provided with a series of of reports. Uh the first one uh is the department monthly report, that's how, um it's just where we're at at the time that the report was produced. It's not an end all be all because we still have some expenditures coming in and also revenue coming in, but it gives you an idea. But it gives you an idea of what has been spent thus far, or what has been spent in that fiscal year. We are now in a new fiscal year that started October first. So, any grants coming forward will be, will be deducted from the, from the budget year this year. And there is approximately two million dollars that has been allocated for grants and sponsorships for this, for this fiscal year. We also have a sales tax comparison and the main station financial reports. What we'd like to do, what we'd like to do moving forward is, aside from just giving you the reports, we wanna provide you with a high-level summary of, of the reports, give you something and maybe in the form of a bullet, bullet points. I know that I had mentioned that to you at a previous meeting, and that has not been forgotten. I, I say it again only because I, I know that I've mentioned it, and it's still a work in progress. Our hope is that here soon, our department will be at full capacity, full staffing level, and we can get back to some of those things that we had previously shared with the board that we wanted to do, provide you the reports in a manner that we had discussed and also make additional enhancements to, to the material that we present to you. So, that is a work in progress. So, just, I would ask that you just bear with us as we're in the midst of this transition, period of transition. Thank you.
Go around the table. Go, staff, any comments, thoughts in respect to the regular report related to the financial report September this year?
For some strange reason, I saw a copy, two copies of the Main Street financials. When I printed out, it registered on my computer between pages twenty-five and forty-one. And then, it printed again for the document between pages ninety-eight and one-eleven. So, I'm not sure exactly why that happened. And I looked at it, it was the same report, so.
We'll look into that, I'll report, report back later this week. Be an email if that's okay, and also provide a, a reporting at the next, next meeting. Is that all right? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I have a question, I miss you, Bert.
Yes.
The, our commitments to our grants, are you guys in the process of developing a spreadsheet for our running total of items that we have awarded to various grantees? And once they get awarded and are paid, that they transfer from the one column to another?
Yes, that is a good question. So, that is a question that actually has been, interestingly enough, asked by other board members. And there are a series of spreadsheets that we have. But what we're looking at is, is putting all that information into one spreadsheet. Because we have one right now that is for the purposes of finances, of, of the finance department, PO number, et cetera. But there's also information there that I think would be of value to, to the board. So, we're looking at, at not making things difficult for, for either department, but also make it useful for the board and let them know where things are at with the grant applications. Cuz we do have a couple of them that, that have expired, that really need to come to, to the board for an extension, if memory serves me correctly, is that, is that the case? And others that we have been having conversations with that have, you know, things that just happened in their life, and now they're getting back to the project. For example, one that comes to mind is a grant, a grant approval for the plaza just up north here on Main Street, Plaza Villarreal. I had a meeting last week with the property owner, and I have another meeting scheduled with them tomorrow. He had to hire a new design team. And so, now he's kind of worked through that, and he's ready to, to pick up where he's left off and, and is ready to apply for the building permits. But unfortunately, because it's been such a long time, he's gonna have to come back through, through the process. But our hope is to be able to provide those type of reports to the board on a regular basis, along with including those reports in, in your packet as written reports, including with the, with the data as well.
Exactly, cuz I think it's important that we track what we've committed to and what, if they do go to fruition and they do whatever the grant was for, and they get seek reimbursement, that we, we're tracking those dollars, and we can keep that running total.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I have one.
Yes.
This board's, my understanding, don't have jurisdiction over the tax incremental investment zone. But the TIF fund is included in our report. So, I guess I'm just curious, how active is the current staff with the members of that board with respect to this economic development tool? Even though it's managed by a different board?
Good question. It's my understanding that, that it's been, it's been a little bit since the TIF board has met. We have actually held off in having a board meeting until we had appointment of new board members. And there's been conversations about having, now that their appointments have been made, to have a board meeting that we would provide them with training, talk about where, where they're at with the, with the TIF financially, and talk about establishing a redevelopment plan. And look at the one that has been adopted and see what changes need to be made moving forward, and what opportunities there are within that, within that TIF boundary.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So, we're still on item six, receiving and discussing the following reports. So, next up is the city sales and use tax comparison summary for September two thousand twenty-four.
Oh, I apologize, I kind of went out of, out of just a big.
Okay, so, if that's the case, yeah. I recall hearing about Main Station, how about Duncanville Fieldhouse?
Oh, I'm sorry, like I said, I went over it, kind of, I went through A through, through D and just one.
So, let me make clear then.
So, what I can.
Since you went over it, does any, any other board members have questions about either the sales tax data that's in the packet, the Duncanville Fieldhouse, Main Station?
Well, looking at the sales tax report, I wish we could project what we were talking about on the screen up there. But anyway, the comparison of sales tax, I, I have a bit of a problem with it because it shows every month for the previous fiscal year. And then it shows, I guess, whatever month today is for the current year. And I think on the current screen, I mean, on the current one. And again, if we were able to project it, oh, here it is. This one says sales tax trend, total sales taxes collected and received. And it's got data for three, six, nine months in the current fiscal year column. And then, for the previous one, two, three, four, five fiscal years, it had data in that as well. So, I think it's intended to be a comparison. And I don't know how you can compare something that's, in essence, dissimilar to the other. If I look at this and I say, okay, through the first nine months of fiscal year, we got ninety-eight hundred thirty-three thousand ninety dollars and forty-six cents. I say, okay, well, how does that compare to the first nine months of the previous fiscal year, the year before that, the year before that? Well, unless I sit up there and work it through by myself, then I can figure out the answer. But if those numbers were omitted, then we would have on the chart nine months of each fiscal year's data. And you could tell the difference at a glance, as opposed to working through them. Interestingly enough, down below here, this one, this, this is a nine-month comparison. But the thing about it is, when you look at this data, this data is dissimilar from this data because this data is nine months, and this is the entire fiscal year. So, just take off. The previous fiscal year is what's not relevant. Anyway, sorry about that for those who. It would have made, it would have been much clearer, much easier to do, if you were able to project. Anyway.
I appreciate, I'm so sorry, go ahead. I appreciate the feedback. We'll work with the finance department, make sure that their, that reports are clear and easier, easier to read and understand moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, if we have no further questions on item six in the report, we'll move to item number seven. Okay, which is discuss and provide direction to staff on the following requests from board. So, we'll start with A, this is for ICSC Las Vegas Conference, Mr. Greg Silk.
So, if you don't mind, before, before we get into that, I just wanna provide a little background, real context as to why these items are on the agenda, why they're being asked for discussed. So, during the court, between, between meetings, we oftentimes get several requests from board members, requesting information, desire to speak about certain items. And so, we thought would be helpful is to put those requests on the agenda, give the board an opportunity to speak openly and to provide staff with direction on how to proceed with those specific items. Cuz we wanna make sure that the board is all working off of the same information and is aware of the requests that are coming in to staff throughout the course of, of the month or between the meetings. So, again, we're just happy to have open, open dialogue and make sure that everyone is, again, working with the same information and staff is given a direction as to how to proceed with certain requests. So, that's just wanna provide you with that, that background information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, i- if you continue that course of action, I think you probably need for board members to provide more detail as to what is being discussed so we can follow the meeting. I had some direct contact with Mr. Harvey when I did this, so I was able to add some additional information to the public's benefit. You probably need to have a little more description as to what is gonna be discussed and what action the board members want the board to consider. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Well, the reason I asked for this to be on there is because several of us had to go to ICS back in May. The state went, Mr. Keys went, myself, Mr. Govan, President, went. And I, I thought it was a very good trip. And I kind of wanna give a report back to y'all of the trip for ourselves. And I've been asked by several council members if this presentation, a presentation was gonna be done by staff to the council on the trip. So, I didn't know if you guys had plans to put together anything.
We had plans to do a, as part of an economic development.
Summary?
Summary of this, this conference, the Austin Conference and other economic development initiatives and actions. That was at a plan to have been done and taken place at the last council meeting. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do that, but that was planned for the next one, which is, I believe, November fifteenth.
So, when I first came on the board, several folks had gone, and I was really confused about what was going on with the whole trip. But I thought the ICS is a huge developers' financial conference that is so large. In two days, there's no way anyone can walk every booth and see everything. So, it is huge. There are so many things there, there's a lot of other cities from Texas that are represented there. So, I guess a couple of the things I'd like to just kind of ask with you guys, being that there's so many opportunities there, how we should proceed going forward as kind of a, just my opinion and maybe Mr. Govan's opinion of what we experienced and what we should look at. And we did have an opportunity to meet up with other cities from Best Southwest, Lancaster, Cedar Hill. We did meet with the Cedar Hill Chamber, not the Chamber of Commerce, but the Economic Development. And, and I think one of the things that was kind of kicked around was potentially having a booth at ICS. And if we were ever to do that type of thing, how we would go about initiating that and getting that to fruition? So, do we attend, do we have a booth? You know, how do we go forward for twenty-twenty-five or twenty-twenty-six? But like I said, I, I thought it was a great event. I learned so much. I, I think we have a lot of retail space here, and how do we repurpose when a deal pulls out of our town? And how do we repurpose that space? And seeing the different types of retailers that maybe would, could, or would be interested in getting the dialogue going and helping you guys do your job, you know, with more contacts and more networking and all those things. So, so anyways, that's kind of all I'd like to say about ICS, that I thought it was a great event. And if we ever get to go again, I would encourage the other board members to go if it's an opportunity. So, plans on the schedule, make them go, cuz I, I thought it was a lot of fun. Mr. Govan, do you wanna say anything about ICS?
So, can I?
Sure.
So, Ken Govan, fourteen oh two, Cross Point Street. ICSC is something that the Duncanville Economic Development Corporation has done for the last several years. The first time that we actually had the opportunity to go was when we were doing Wheatland Plaza. Wheatland Plaza, we were trying to look at trying to get either franchises or companies that wanted to move into Wheatland Plaza and to just promote Wheatland Plaza in regards to other companies that were just outside of this, of the service for rent. We have a, just like, just like Austin Lot, Austin Lot? Retail Lot, there are, there are some developers that are here that because of the day-to-day hectic stuff that we do, we don't have, we don't get a chance to always have a chance to talk with them. But they're there, they're setting up times that we can actually sit down and talk about stuff that's going on here in Duncanville. Just like Zelka, Mrs. Zelka said, we also partner with other Best Southwest cities. One of the things that I think we do very well as a, as a group is when we partner and introduce, and introduce people to the region. Someone who might be in El Paso or South Texas may not know who Duncanville is. But when you put this, us together as a, as a group, when we talk about Duncanville, Cedar Hill, Red Oak, all the way over to Bolt Springs, that's a whole region. And we get people interested in coming to this region in regards to that. So, we partner with them and we take those resources, and we, we develop. One city might be looking at residential, one city might be looking at retail, one city might be looking at large, large industrial. And the way our region is set up, we piggyback off those. And so, we partner and have networking things there. Now, the city, now a lot of the cities that we do that with are here locally. But when we're there, we're able to introduce those developers in regards to what we have here. A lot of the cities, a lot of the projects that we have here in Duncanville are redeveloped properties. We don't, we're, we're landlocked, so we're looking at properties that we have, so we want the companies to move into those properties. We've had some, we have had some success at those, at those events. It was funny because when Chick-fil-A was trying to move into, was trying to come into Duncanville, we happened to run into the lady at Chick-fil-A who was doing that, was having some challenges in regards to some of the stuff she was trying to do here in Duncanville. And it just so happened she ran into me and David. And one of the things she had a problem with was she hadn't talked to anybody about getting electricity to it. And we just kind of laughed about it. But those are relationships and, and, and opportunities we have in regards to that. I think it's a great opportunity. I think if it's done right. I think it's a great opportunity. I think if it's done right in regards to planning, not just showing up and saying, what are we going to do? But if we show up and say, hey, we got this, this person going to meet here, we're going to meet this person here, we're going to be, we're going to be intentional in regards to what we want to do. We're going to be intentional in regards to who we want to meet with because we know what we want here in Duncanville. So we want to meet with those people, make sure they're going to be there, see what, see what products or whatever they're going to have and see how it fits here. And I think it's very important, I think it was very successful. If you don't mind, I'm, I'm, I'm going to call you out, Mr. Monty. Monty went with us the first time and we was able to work with him in regards to other things because he was doing Wheatland Plaza. And that way he, we were able to say in regards to different products and different businesses, we wanted to go into that facility. So we were just direct, we were very direct in what we wanted to do and intentional in what we wanted to do.
So, any other board members have any questions about I C S?
No, I mean, like you've gone several years with different cities and, and Mr. Govan's right. Very rarely can you just show up at another vendor's booth and they usually book appointments in advance. So it would be in our best interest to put together an agenda, identify whatever strategic catalytic sites we want to try to, you know, fly a larger banner for and, yeah, get those appointments on the book when we send our delegation out there. Similar to what would happen to Retail Live, I think that that's exactly what ends up happening. I know that to be a deal-making convention more than anything. You, you know, you come in, if we're thinking about getting a booth, again, I would just say we want to give some thought to that. And see what, what would be the cost of benefit.
And I think we had talked about Duncanville, DeSoto, Cedar Hill, Lancaster going in together to, to promote best southwest as a region, as not Duncanville by itself.
I was going to ask into that, do we have data to show what best southwest does? Cause what I'm thinking is like, for example, if you're just canvassing Duncanville and not realizing the proximity order, it's a relationship with best southwestern. You don't realize the traffic that could come, right?
Correct.
Cause you said, you mentioned like our demographic, like Target is probably canvassed, oh, people from Duncanville will go to Cedar Hill to go to Target.
But each one of the, each one of the economic development corporations and our best southwest, we actually have, the best southwest partnership is what they work with. And we actually have a, a document that puts together income, transportation, closest proximity to education, land maps, land use maps. And we have a document that puts that together. We have, we have used that in regards to going into different conferences. Cedar Hill uses it. I know DeSoto has used it. I think we can benefit by putting that together and taking that with us as a region.
Right.
Sure. That's all I was going to ask about. Did you want to say anything about?
Um, yeah, I want to say that the, the classes and the workshops that they had, it's very important for us to know what's going on in the rest of the country. And so I think that was the biggest advantage for us, just to, it's just a way for us to see what's going on in the country. So I like that.
No, actually, I just, so just talk about it and share with everybody for transparency that it was a great event. I think it's my opinion. Hopefully we continue with that in the future.
Okay, got your voice warmed up, Greg. Coming back to you. All right, still item number seven, item B, Duncanville Fieldhouse Strategic Plan.
On this one here, I, I guess the one thing I was looking forward to is hopefully developing in the near future workshop. Once we get our seventh seat filled, that we could maybe do a workshop on the strengths, weaknesses and of the field house. And where the field house is going and maybe have a joint meeting with council on that. The facility may be needing some expenses and I just want to really encourage us to think, what is the strategic use of the field house going five and ten years? And maybe in the comprehensive plan with the M R V group, that's going to be included. So that, that was kind of one of the things that I was thinking about for the field house. Because I've seen it, I've lived here a long time and I've seen it go from an ice skating rink to its basketball facility. And it is just used so much. And I went by it the other day and it was just coming out with the Gills cars. And I think we've got a real jewel there and I just want to make sure that our board does whatever we need to do to strategically align that facility for a five, ten, fifteen year down, down the road plan, whatever the city manager thinks and what you guys think. That's really all I just wanted to say about that is that we get a workshop maybe at some point.
Any other thoughts, discussion, the board or after you, Victor?
To, to add to that, Mr. Zook has shared with me his desire and idea of, of having a tour. For the board to be provided a tour of, of the field house for those that have not obtained a tour, like to see some of the new things, some of the things that are going on in the field house. But also there is a, an idea tossed out there about the possibility of the facilities manager coming to a future meeting and talking about some of the, some of the new events, new activities. Some of the things that are going on programming-wise at the field house. And then possibly have more discussions about developing a strategic plan. Did I miss anything?
Okay, all right, the comment. Couple of months back, we authorized expenditure to do the, the assessment analysis to both repair and, and improve the current H V A C system, right, the field house. But part of that discussion was around an overall needs assessment of that asset, given its history and the original design and pan views and the conversion, which may be contributing to some of the limited capacity of that HVAC system. So it seems like if we're going to move forward with any type of strategic plan, we would also need a thorough understanding of the existing conditions, usable life of all those major mechanical systems. And then what's realistic as we then advance forward about, okay, what's possible for this facility. We start with what's needed and we've been getting some requests because those, that list of deferred maintenance, depending on the severity of prioritization is just right with concern. So we definitely feel like we want to make sure we understand where things are with that, with that facility as we start to plan, forecast for the next, like you say, ten to fifteen years.
Can I add something?
Certainly, sir.
Especially in light of the fact that the E D C after the recurring fiscal year that we are in is no longer bound by debt covenants to provide six hundred and fifty something thousand dollars to the field house. And that could be an ongoing source of revenue to fund a facility equipment replacement reserve in the field house. It's, it's there, it's just a matter of making the decision. The only, the only thing that's going to take care of that issue is money. They say money can't solve everything. Money can solve that.
Okay, all right, we're still item number seven, but now budget training.
I just wanted to comment on the budget training Miss Otey did last meeting was, I, I thought it was excellent. And once again, once we get our seventh seat filled, that possibly that we have some more budget training and go over more of the nuts and bolts. To Mr. Harvey's point, I, I understood a little bit of what he was talking about, but I'm not an accountant, but I do understand that. But I think some training, so if there's someone on our board that's weak in accounting, maybe it can help lift them up and understand our budgets a little better. Maybe be a little more strategic, uh, understanding how to, how to spend our money and how we do it. And that's all I really just want to say that. I really appreciate Miss Otey coming in and doing that for us last week.
Thanks, Greg. Okay, all right. Next we have discussion certified appraisers valuation for Main Station, Wheatland Plaza, but also the total property valuation citywide.
So do I get to tag Greg Zelka out?
We believe Greg.
Thing about financial reports is that you, you put a set of numbers on a piece of paper. And it really don't say a whole lot, quite frankly. And so we, we look at our existence as a board and what we're expected to do. And if you were to ask me that question, what are we expected to do, my response would be to strengthen, to enhance, to make greater the assessed valuation of commercial properties in this region. When you look at Duncanville, Duncanville has always been a bedroom community. And I don't think we can transform it in a year. But if we want to know, my opinion, if we want to know the effectiveness of what we are doing, then it's, it's more than just giving our grants. It's got to, as others would have said, got to make the difference. And I am of the opinion that the difference can be measured quantitatively. The right numbers will indicate how effective we are at becoming less of a bedroom community and more of a diversified revenue community. And so I wasn't picking on Monty. I know Monty for a long time. But the point that I was trying to make was when we give an entity a grant, then we should know and follow up and tell the community, hey, we gave, I'm going to use Monty again, I'm not picking on Monty, X number of dollars, we gave Monty X number of dollars and Monty was able to parlay that into the tax base going by, boom. And so I, I say that because when you communicate the story like that to people that live here, they get. That's what they want. And, and so I think we need to embark on a search of the right kind of numbers that will tell the story of how effective we are. I mean, the, the best budgets I've seen tell the story of a community, the challenges it faces and how it is assembling its resources to deal with those challenges. What success looks like. And so that's basically what I was trying, attempting to do with this. And, you know, Monty has, I remember Monty saying this before, you know, the, the story of Main Street was you had this property. And this was the assessed valuation, wasn't a whole lot, but then after, after everybody kind of pitched in and did what it was that they could do, lo and behold, we get Main Station. And so we, we need to, I think, make it a practice to follow through on the relationships that we have with the business community. And, and when we do these things, then, you know, we can tell the story of how we improve the quality of life for the entire community. What I may have said may sound esoteric, but that's what I'm going to do.
I can, yeah, share our success stories, right? Yeah, and I think in some respect, the staff you do, when we do, we'll just say it's the cost of benefit analysis when we're presenting grant applications. We look at current assessed value, Mr. Harvey said, we look at what that property currently generates and have the loan taxes. And then we look at maybe the amount of time it would take for us to recapture our assets. But almost like you say, a success where after the grant's been funded, the project's been completed, looking back, like, hey, this actually was a success. We actually did increase the assessed value. We probably can't share sales tax data, but there are, you're right, there are some indicators that we could easily share with the community. Show that we're being good stewards of tax revenue.
I guess I have a more practical question. How and who is sharing the success story with the community? I think the most we've done as a board is we've requested signage or recognition on marketing. So how are we actively doing that? I think we all agree on what our goal and objective is, but how are we actively doing that? And whose role is that? And that may be a staff question. Whose job is it to communicate that effectively to the community? Why?
If, if I could interject, I, I would say that we as a board set expectations. And the paid staff listens to what it is we want and then put their collective minds together and say, here, the options and strategies or whatever that will get you what you want in certain sort of.
You know what you could do, it's a very simple thing, when you make a grant, someone puts a new sign up, but your sign up says this sign was courtesy of the board?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you do that recognition. But we do that with bonds. It's bond projects.
That's, that's, that's simple and straightforward.
Sorry about the memes, sorry.
But you're right, I, I am looking for something where you have to peel the under back a little bit.
Yeah, we do that. Absolutely. Let people know your grant dollars at work, but like you said, the post-development poured out, you know? After that, news line is faded, right? There's more performance, right? They'll actually perform, right? We actually did, you know, so I, I mean, I guess if we do, I mean, you guys mentioned you're getting ready to do an update from the council. I mean, that, that, that should be opportunities for us to report out. But I agree, like you say, the format is something that I don't know we necessarily need to dictate. But programmatically, whether it's quarterly, annually, those, this has been my experience where, you know, apartments and then the city as a whole takes the opportunity to say, actually, yeah, these are our success stories. We did this in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four or first quarter, et cetera. And, you know, you hit them with the relevant data points, assessed value, number of jobs, et cetera, et cetera.
And, and also too, in terms of, you know, where you get the information from, you know, I, I would guess that the building official, building inspections, whatever, they do the permits. And so the permit comes in for, you know, that amount. And then when you get their certificate of occupancy, at some point, that information goes to Dallas Central Appraisal District. And it goes, it now becomes a part of our, our record. And so, you know, it could be something as simple, as simple as saying, okay, building official, can you give me the number? Can you give me the number of the value of the certificate of occupancy? And. That would be the information, that's what's gotta go on the dashboard.
Okay, thank you. On our next item, under seven, which is E, Financial Accounting of Grants Awarded Past Eighteen Months.
Yeah, so. Financial accounting, uh, it it really, I have a, I have a better. I have a better phrase that I want to substitute for financial accounting, and and that is, uh, status. Yeah, status of grant awarded over the prior eighteen months. And I want to acknowledge, uh, Mr. Barea, because I think you may have heard him mention. That, you know, there are some grants that we, you know, need to address at some point because. They're out there, let's find out what's going on, if it's still in, if it's in extenuating circumstances, that sort of thing. So, so I would, um, I would definitely like to see that as part of the material. That he gives to us, you know, staff does that schedule and out on the right-hand column, there's like notes. And and so, you know, use that column, if there's not enough, then just asterisk. And say, okay, this is A, and then A says, yada, 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 yada. So that, um, you know, we can know, we can know as a as a board that, you know, things are moving.
Mr. Harvey, any, any questions, any additional discussion? Okay.
One of the things also that we've done is when we do the grant agreements for a year. So if the money's not spent at the end of the year, technically, the agreement expires. So they either have to come back, or that money is not spent. And if they don't come back, then the money goes back available for you to, um, spend with another client, customer. And, uh, there have been occasions when we extended it because of storm damage, you know? During the snowmageddon, uh, and COVID, extended a bunch of grants. Because we couldn't get any building supplies and we couldn't make that thing to keep the water on. So, those were extenuating circumstances, but we extended grant periods, uh, but. And then gained the grant agreements themselves.
And and the situation I'm trying to avoid, Council Hager, is. If that information on that sheet goes stale and nobody's following up on it. And then some client comes in and wants a grant. And we look at the sheet and we say, oh, we don't have enough money.
Money?
But if we're keeping track of that sheet, you know, on a regular basis, you know, we pretty much know what we have and we know.
And historically, you do reimbursement grants only, so, uh, the money's accounted for, you know, and but it's not spent.
Okay, but it's in, but it's in cover.
It is in cover, that's the word.
So, yeah.
So if it's not going to be spent, then give it back to us and we'll spend it.
Okay, item seven F, this is to review specific line items on that August two thousand twenty four month of court.
I'm I'm gonna expect to be asked to be pulled out because I I was struggling just a few minutes ago trying to explain something. And just not in a position to be able to project it. And and so, uh, I'm. I want to, uh, go on and pull that one until such time. As I can work with staff and just let them know. That we need the ability to be able to show things so that the public can follow.
Anyone else have comments on this item, discussion? Okay, that brings us to item seven G, Economic Development Law Update.
Yes, so, the reason why I asked for that because I I just feel like, um. We're better positioned to be more effective when we routinely hear, uh, uh. For example, changes that the legislative legislature has made. Or if we have, like myself, new board members that come in, then it's kind of like part of an orientation. Where individuals can get up to speed as to what they need to do, so, uh. I was thinking particularly of Mr. Hager, but we'll have to look to someone else to provide, of course, I imagine.
How can I say, when spoken to, I will speak, if not spoken to, I won't. So, uh, there's really no, no change, there's, you know, a lot of what we've done in previous training, previous experience probably holds true now. One of the things that I have noticed over the last few months, that, uh, one of the things that I would ask you to do is always give. Whether it's me or Mr. Stanley, as much information as possible to write the agreement that you want written so that it's enforceable. And we've had occasions where people have not done what they say they are doing. Now, and we gave them the money upfront, and we don't do that anymore. But it's still important, so if, when I, if you give a signed grant to somebody and you say, well, we're gonna give you a signed grant and you have a picture. Is the picture supposed, what are the dimensions, what are the materials made out of? So that you get what you pay for. And, you know, when when someone asks for money, you're entitled to that level of detail. You know, when they want to repave the parking lot, how many square feet? It's not that hard to figure out, you're asking, people are asking you, they should bring you all the information that you need. To have to write the grant agreement appropriately so that Victor and whomever, and so you know what you get. And there have been occasions when we've not had that level of detail and it makes. You know, I've had to sue people over, uh, grant agreements over the years. And it's because they had the level of detail, we were able to prevail and get the money back. Or, you know, you didn't give us what we asked you to give us. I just want you to be wide, eyes wide open, because you have accountability. You add sales tax money and yes, not only do our citizens add to that, but people outside, but it's still tax money at the end of the day. So there needs to be some accountability by the grantee, uh, and the grantor has the ability to ask for that. And that's one of the things that I would challenge you, you're entitled to the level of detail. And either the applicant needs to give it to you, or staff needs to give it to you. And if they don't give it to you, then have them go get it. While I'm anxious to see us flourish, I'm also anxious to hold people responsible for what they, we had to get what you paid for. Especially when you have tax money, so, that's all. But either him or I or someone, uh, when the legislature convenes on that full day in January. We will know what the bills that are being introduced are and we'll, uh, make that information available to you. I'll either make it available to Brandon or me and you to find that, if you select him, if you're a lawyer, get that information to you. And keep you up to speed at the end of the legislative session as to what the legislature's done to us. Or what they may think they want to do to us, that we may need you to go. I'm gonna be a little bit more proactive after seeing what the legislature's done to cities, we can go down to and offer testimony. To protect our our local tax administered by a local governing body that, uh, should be kept. Because we're the best, I'm prejudiced, but this is the best governance local government.
Yeah.
Because you get to see, people get to come and see it.
Yeah.
And they get to participate, they get to talk, you can't do that any other place except for here. That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Okay, uh, last item, for seven, H, Agenda Item Request.
Yes, thank you. So, the reason why I added that was because, um, as I understand the bylaws. We, as a board, uh, have been given the latitude to suggest agenda items. So I was thinking, as we do agendas, moving into the future, that we have a section at the end which says, future agenda items. And so, uh, if one of us would like to put something on the agenda for all of us to discuss, that would be the vehicle by which we would do it.
Any, any other, any additional thoughts or comments from?
Over.
Mr. Harvey, item, okay. Thank you. Okay, item eight, Discuss and Consider Approval of a DC/EDC Minutes for the Regular Meeting Held on September twenty third, two thousand twenty four. If you want to have a chance to look at that in their packet. Okay, uh, let's first off, if there's a motion.
I'd like to make the motion, we go ahead and approve these, uh, there are some type of technical spelling errors in document that need to be approved. The word board is misspelled in some places. And then, um, for seven, D, second paragraph, uh, Mr. Martin talked about, um, getting something together and presented at the beginning of the year. I think a word was embedded in there, we can get, you know, leave its documents, is the word that we made. If we can get that entered into there as a correction, I'd make a motion to approve these minutes.
As corrected.
As correct.
Not secondhand.
Okay, we have a motion, second, any other discussion? Okay, here none. All those in favor, say aye. Both? Okay, that motion carries. Next item, we're at item number nine on the agenda, Discuss and Consider Approval of a Commercial Contract. Sale and Addendum for Real Estate Known as Seven Twenty Seven Cockroyle Hill Street. Between Brownfield Ruffelco LLC and the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation.
So, thank you, good evening, the subject property is located on the west side of Cockroyle Street, uh, south of Wheatland, uh, Road. The property is currently owned by the, by the city. Earlier this year, the city, uh, by way of resolution approved, the city council, excuse me, the city council by way of resolution approved the transfer of ownership. From, uh, the city coun, the city to the Economic Development Corporation. Uh, that transfer has not happened yet, uh, because there's some tackling on the property and we have not been able to transfer the deed over to the corporation. Uh, but we have, uh, reached a s, an agreement with the, with the lien holder. Uh, that, uh, agreement has been presented to city council and it's expected to be voted on formally, uh, tomorrow during a special meeting. Uh, but what you have before you is a real estate contract for the purchase of the property for the development of, of the site for an HTO facility. Uh, this evening, you have, uh, representatives of the buyer and, uh, HTO here to answer any questions that the board may have. Uh, the purchase price, agreed upon purchase price is three hundred seventy five thousand dollars. Uh, the three hundred seventy five thousand dollar figure was obtained from, uh, the county records as the, uh, estimated value of the, of the real estate. Uh, that's all I have regarding this matter, and again, you have representatives from the buyer and, uh, HTO that are here to answer any questions that the board may have. Yes?
So, uh, I have, uh, I I'd like to, uh, ask to hear from HTO. But before I do that, uh. The way that the agenda is, is awarded. I don't think there's a Cockroyle Hill Street, I think it's a Cockroyle Road. That's how I've known it.
Yes, you're right, that is, that is a typo, I would.
And the address is seven twenty seven. But then when we get down to eleven A, eleven A, the address there is seven twenty six. South of Cockroyle Road, uh, because the one that we're about to talk about now is on.
The west side.
West side, and then, uh, the care facility is on the edge of the property that's now, Winko used to be wrong on. So it's, it's there on, right there.
Yes.
So they're not, they're not the same address, they're different addresses.
That's correct.
So, I've never heard of HTO, so, you're saying representative of HTO is here?
Yes, in your board packet, I've provided you with preliminary, uh, renderings, uh, of the proposed building and signage. Uh, this is a building that was recently, uh, constructed in Allen, Texas. But again, the H, HTO team is here to answer questions that the board may have.
Okay, take it away.
Do you wanna, do you wanna talk?
Yeah, I'll talk.
Do do me a favor, before, just state your name and your business address, just for the record.
Absolutely, Colton St. Peters with HTO. Colton St. Peters with HTO, um, business address is one, three, two, two Ranchers Legacy Trail, forward Texas. Um, HTO is a beverage franchise, um, we have just under a hundred and fifty locations right now. We serve, um, freshly brewed broadleaf tea, um, we also serve coffee, um, tea and water. Have twenty six different flavors from sweet Georgia peach to unsweet coconut. And when you walk inside the store, you know, everything's self-serve, we have, you know, country music playing. And, you know, we have the sample cups, you have like Yeti products. You know, everything inside this store is grab and go snacks, healthy options, we have from like beef jerky to protein bars to like healthy chips. But like I mentioned, coffee, we sell free rein coffee, um.
Do you have a drive-through?
We do, yes.
So.
Drive-through.
So, uh, so, you all are gonna have, well, I wouldn't be surprised if you all, you're in stiff competition for coffee. Because we are just about the coffee capital of North Texas.
Okay.
So, uh, so you, I, you're coming at a good time, no doubt. So how long have you all, uh, been doing this?
So, HTO was founded in two thousand eight, it started, um, out of a burger restaurant in Amarillo, Texas. Really how it started was a lot of the employees that worked at the burger restaurant would go to, you know, Sonic, go to Chicken Express to, you know, grab tea. During lunch, and so, our founder put a bunch of flavored tea bubblers right next to the soda machine. And it was a hit, and then, um, they did, they did like a, a co-tentant, um, drive-through. Um, and it was a hit. And then, um, they did, they did like a, a co-tentant, um, drive-through tea concept just to see how it would work. Um, and it ended up, you know, paying the bills. And so, um, they branched out to create really a, a test prototype. It was two thousand square feet. It's called Texas Tea in Amarillo, Texas. Um, and it, it was a hit. Um, and now, I mean, two thousand eighteen, we signed our first franchise. And I think right now we have six hundred franchise partners right now. So. And we are, we are from Arizona to Florida, up to Kansas, Arkansas, Tennessee right now.
Any other questions, board member from the, the buyer? So, we got the operator, HTA, developer?
Uh, my name is Jack Skoye. I work with Vision Commercial, real estate in Grapevine, Texas, representing the buyers of the property.
Okay.
And the franchisee.
Okay. Thank you. My question was gonna be for the staff.
Yes.
And actually, with respect to Vision Commercial, they're representing, uh, the city or the EDC? They're representing the buyer?
The buyer.
Okay.
The buyer. This is something that staff has been working on for, uh, several months, you know, truth be told. This is a project, uh, that, uh, Ms. Day and I inherited. And, um, it got, uh, we quickly learned that there were, uh, there was quite a bit of complexities to the project, uh, but we have, over the course of the last, we've kind of straightened all that out and get to where we are. Um, and we're happy that this is moving forward. Uh, it's unfortunate that we didn't move forward with it sooner, but we are where we are now. We're going full speed ahead. Um, this will, um, proposed use will require a special use permit. Uh, so at one point, at some point in the near future, there will be a public hearing scheduled before the Planning and Zoning Commission for their special use for their drive-through and laws will be coming before city council for approval.
I guess my question, my follow-up question would be for you, Ms. Day, are, we view this as a typical, uh, arms-length purchase-sale agreement? Or is this a purchase-development agreement where we have those, whether we have any callback or reversionary agreements that we need to make sure so that the development actually performs?
There is some required now for economic development deal. And so, this deal does have a callback provision that is extinguished by them pulling the building permit, I believe, to build the facility.
Okay.
This is the, the first part of, of that process.
Okay.
And it, it will be a double closing. We'll close the city to you and then to the end user all at the same time.
Okay. And I guess I could read through that and see that we got like an extended due diligence period. Do we anticipate any issues that would?
No, I don't think, this is the old Shammyville property for, uh, anyone that may not know that. And so, we've got a long storied history with this, uh, when we ended up with it in the first place. And we've done all that ahead of time. Uh, what we did find is there's some old tax liens on the property and they had to be accounted for. So, we've, that's what's kind of held us up a little bit is to get, make sure all that was taken care of. Uh, Victor and his staff, uh, met with lien holders. Uh, what had happened in Shammyville actually went out and got, uh, what they call tax loans, uh, to pay off, uh, taxes. And so, uh, then the people ran off with the money and didn't pay the taxes. So, they owned, uh, those tax liens. And so, we had to extinguish those, uh, in order to move forward with this end user. And so, uh, we've got all that taken care of. All the due diligence has been done as far as, uh, hazardous materials on site because they were involved in the car business. And, uh, you know, there's a lot of discharge of oil and all of those things when they're washing cars and all that. So, it's come back clean. So, we thought there might be a tank on site. We made sure that was taken care of and all those things over the years.
Right. Okay. Good. Okay, uh, any other questions?
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Uh, the appraisal of the property, um.
We got the approved value, fair market value.
That was property completed. And then, uh, does the property need to be resurveyed or replanted?
I don't believe so.
Okay, no further questions or comments. We should entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we proceed with staff to, uh, purchase the property from the city of Duncanville.
And sell it to.
Sell it to, um, the, um.
Brown Fed.
Brown Co. LLC. For three hundred seventy-five thousand, uh, to develop the site for an HTO facility.
Okay, clear properly. Move and second. Alright, we entertain a vote. All those who aren't favored, you say by saying aye?
Aye.
And those opposed by that same sign. Okay, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this brings us to item number ten. Discuss and consider approval of a letter of engagement between Shelby Law, P L L C, and the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation for legal services.
So, this is an item that we had previously discussed with the board of the expand, Ms. Day and I spent the last few, uh, months interviewing a number of different attorneys to serve as a special counsel for the, uh, for the board. Uh, there were some attorneys that just, uh, were not the right fit, were not, uh, for the board's needs, for the city's economic development needs, and, uh, some of the initiatives that, uh, Ms. Day and I have been discussing. Uh, and then there were other firms that just didn't, uh, unfortunately have the, uh, capacity, uh, to meet, uh, to meet and fulfill some of our demands and some of our desires. Um, and then we had a, uh, very pleasant conversation with Mr. Shelby. Uh, he's, uh, very well-known in the economic development world. Uh, has done, uh, quite a bit of, uh, agreements and has just vast knowledge of the workings of corporations. Uh, highly recommended by, um, a couple of attorneys that we had, uh, spoken to. And it's my understanding that, um, previously had done, actually so, uh, collaborated with Mr. Hager on a number of different, uh, projects. Uh, so before you, this evening is a letter of engagement, uh, to hire Shelby Law, P L L C, and to serve as the board's, uh, special counsel, uh, moving forward. Uh, this evening we have Mr. Shelby here, uh, that is available to answer any questions that the board may have regarding any of his, uh, experience, um, in serving, uh, boards and economic development agreements, uh, initiatives, agreements, et cetera.
And I, before you do that, uh, there's a question asked during, uh, citizens' comments, why Sherman? And, uh, one is, in this day and age, I work all over the state of Texas. Most lawyers do, they have a specialty. I am the EDC lawyer in a number of cities that I do not represent. And those cities are a way, a long way from Dallas, Texas. And I make those drives and I do most of my work nowadays by fax, by email, by Zoom. And one of the things that I think is important is your ED lawyer, of which I have some cities, I do Ennis, I do Pilot Point. They're miles from here. And the reason is because there's conflict. And the conflict is, I don't want, there are other lawyers in the area that do this kind of work, but they represent your neighbors. They represent other cities. And that puts that lawyer, I think, in an ethical bond. And I, I've, uh, known Mr. Shelby for a long time, worked with him. He, he travels all over as well. He goes to Fort Worth and, you know, as far as Waco. And it's because of these conflicts, uh, that I don't have, when I do work for Ennis, I, I don't have to worry about conflict with Palmer or Ferris or any of those cities that border them. Uh, I do Pilot Point because they had problems with Prosper and Salina. Uh, so they want a lawyer that's not, if you're gonna have another lawyer that does the work for the EDC, it ought to be someone that doesn't have conflict. And you can trust that doesn't, it's not gonna have that conflict. And I, I think Mr. Shelby fills that bill for us. Uh, so that's, that's why, that's why. I think it's in our best interest if we're gonna have a separate counsel for EDC, that we have someone as loyal to him, to me and to you. So. And I don't want to deal with Mr. Shelby's ability to talk.
Okay, so I, I have a question.
Yes.
And so, I have no doubt that, from what I know, that you are very capable with, um, economic development law. How are you with parliamentary procedure and the infamous Robert Williams of laws?
I was on, I was in the FFA at law school, if that helps. So, we went over that. But, uh, I can give you a little bit of my, my background, uh, for everyone. I'm, uh, from Deep East, Texas. I'm from, uh, Detroit, Texas, which is about thirty minutes the other side of Paris, twenty minutes the other side of Paris, Texas. A small one-A community. I went to college in, at Austin College in Sherman. Uh, it's where I met my wife, which is why I ended up back in Sherman. Uh, graduate from, uh, University of Texas Law School, uh, two thousand four. I was the city attorney, uh, and attended public meetings for the city of Sherman for more than ten years. Uh, I've been city attorney for the city of, uh, Parker, and city attorney for the city of Italy. Uh, I'm currently city attorney for Village Nolwood, which is a small community in North Texas. I'm currently the, uh, attorney for the Texas Council, Texoma Council of Governments, TCOG. They have public meetings like this. Uh, I'm there. I'm not their parliamentarian, but I, I, I do have vast experience participating in meetings. I've participated in, um, municipal-type organizations on the state level, uh, as, as a part of, uh, being the city attorney for the city of Sherman. I was the, uh, EDC attorney for the city of Sherman for a number of years and did, uh, economic development agreements with, uh, I actually might be aware that, that city's growing pretty fast. And we have been for a number of years. I, I was involved in a lot of those. I've done economic development for the city of Italy, city of, uh, Gunner. Uh, so I've done this type of work for the last fifteen years or so. Um, I'm excited to be here. Uh, Mr. Hager is correct. We, we worked together. Uh, I was at a firm in Dallas that did, uh, litigation defense for, for municipalities with the, uh, for TML. And, uh, Mr. Hager was the city attorney for a, a few cities that we did litigation for. That's how, that's how we know one another. Um. Uh, the distance thing, like, like you said, that, that's not an issue. I have clients, uh, that I see on a weekly basis. I drive from Sherman to, uh, North Washington Hills for a client, uh, every Tuesday morning. Going to drive back to Sherman's night, get up early in the morning, go visit them tomorrow. Uh, but they're a real estate development company and they have businesses in, or developments in Tyler and Waco and, uh, all over the state. So, this, this type of law is the primary law that I've practiced since, uh, I actually did toxic tour for about three years at, at a law school. But other than those three years, I've been done municipal, government entity work, uh, EDC work, uh, for my entire career. And, uh, happy to entertain any questions you may have, more specific questions you may have about that. Uh, or, uh, you know, once this is, once this is approved, maybe I'll, I'll be on the clock. You can ask me questions about the other stuff that was on the agenda.
Well, my, my, my concern, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just gonna ask if there were any other questions.
Okay, just, just, just real quick. My, my concern is that, not only that we do things, but that we do them in the right way. So, I, I, I would feel very comfortable if, uh, somehow either physical presence or by Zoom, uh, that, you know, we could have an attorney here so that we don't run afoul of open meetings and, you know, all of that kind of stuff. That's my concern. So.
And, you know, I will pledge this to you. If, if, you know, if for some reason he can't be here, I will. Okay? And I've had a very good cooper, collaborative, uh, relationship with Brandon. And we have mutual friends and in this business. And I wouldn't recommend him to you if I didn't believe he could serve us. You appropriately, he will be, uh, he, he will work with me too, uh, from the city side, uh, so that give you some assurance that it's not, you know, I work with the city attorney in Ennis and other places that I go and where I do EDC work. And, uh, you know, I trust, uh, Brandon to do a good job or I wouldn't recommend him. So, uh, I think, I think he, he can serve you well. While at the same time, have some independence. Uh, you know, I think it's important for you to feel like you're an independent board because you're charged with that responsibility. And so, one of the things that you would want to do is what may be in your best interest, in your opinion, as a board, may not be in the city's best interest as the council. And so, there'll be times when there is that, well, you say, positive irritation between you two to get the best thing for the citizens at the end. So, I think it is important that you have that, uh, independence, uh, as, as you move forward. Because you're getting big enough now and you're doing things that you normally haven't done in the past. You're given more responsibility. Uh, you're doing redevelopment of this town, which it's time for that to happen. And so, it may dictate that you have some independence for me. So.
Anyone else?
No, I was just gonna say, I appreciate the different perspective and views, uh, from the Sherman area. Um, it's different. I would imagine a different type of economy up there, maybe more rural.
Yeah, Sherman's, it's a similarly sized town, uh, but it is, it has a, uh, I still feel like I was in Dallas when I got here today. You know, the, you're, you're a part of the Metroplex and Sherman certainly isn't.
Yeah.
I think they call, they call themselves the Retroplex because they're not quite part of it yet. But, uh, as far as the, the size of the town's very similar. And so, it's similar type projects, uh, probably. Uh, I think Sherman may be a bit more industrial than you guys are. But if you're looking to go that way or, or not, that's, uh, you know, I've had, I've had that experience. We have a, Sherman does have a much, much worse football team.
I can't have everything.
I, I did, I did have one question or comment. Uh, so, I have no doubt, and I, I trust the recommendation of city staff, uh, city managed office, EDC, and the city attorney. Um, I'm curious to know if there are any specific examples of, you know, communities like ourselves. We're pretty proud of the, uh, the few true public partnership development agreements that we've been able to execute, right? And some of those need is necessary in order to, you know, get the project developed, get the pro forma stabilized with the plan to at some point liquidate those, that, that investment and repurpose those funding. Any experience working with cities, whatever the size they are? Um, we have one of our developers here, we just walked back in. But again, as an example, right, where the, the EDC is taking an ownership interest, right? Both, um, you know, to, 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 to advance those development projects. Um, and do you understand that, how they can be complex? Any specific examples you work with on those kind of projects?
Uh, again, it would be Sherman.
Okay.
It would be the most, most similar you got, what you guys are looking to do. Uh, but some of the things that have come up in tonight's meeting, uh, such as the, uh, the, the account of, accounting of the projects and the, uh, the post-project reporting, uh, we did that with Sherman's EDC. Uh, we kept track of, you know, where they were along in the grant, uh, you know, sort of like a progress report, uh, for the outstanding grants that are out there. I think that's a good idea to keep everyone, uh, you know, informed and also excited about what's going on. Because if you grant somebody a grant and never talk about it again, you know, that's, um, it, it, it's out of mind, out of sight, out of mind. And, uh, I think what you guys are wanting as far as, uh, account, aside, the word accounting was used and, and accountability was a part of what you were thinking. But, uh, just keeping information fresh, I think that's, that's important to an EDC.
Well, let me ask you this, this way. Would there be an instance where you would not be able to handle legal services in-house and have the need to then outsource a particular component of negotiation? Say if we had a project or opportunity like you're saying, this, or where, you know, the development, we like the proposal. the developer, we like the proposal, right? But we need to create a single purpose entity just to own it with the developer and the complexity that goes with that. Is that something you'd be able to handle in-house with Shelby Law or would you need to bring in some other partners?
Now, I, well, that, what that touches on is my, my non-governmental clients.
Okay.
I do that sort of thing for them all the time. And so I would be able to do most of that work. But I'm also aware of what Mr. Hager had said, uh, if there's a potential for conflict in doing that kinda work, I would always bring that up to the board, uh, and to the staff and let them know, run a conflicts assessment and if, if there is a need for outside counsel. I have a vast network of lawyers that we can, we can talk to. But I don't, I don't anticipate you having any work that I can't do.
Okay.
You might have some work I probably should refer out, but, uh, I, I don't anticipate a project coming up that I don't know what to do.
Yeah, we're, cause we, we actually have on a partnership interest in main station. Which is kinda unique, right, Mont?
And that's why I brought that up.
And, and so, and I, I don't think it's something that, if he can't handle it, I could and vice versa. So I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't work. But there, there's always a chance that someone may do something so bizarre, so unique that no one has done it before except for somebody in another state, somebody in another region. I would at least wanna talk to that person. So that, we always have that problem, but on a day-to-day, on the routine stuff, I think that he and I can manage to get you in enough trouble.
Got it. Yeah, so, okay. Okay, there aren't any other questions or comments? Mr. Hager, take the motion.
I would actually like to move to table this discussion into closed session. Executive session, sorry.
Motion?
Uh, you have an executive session, not listed.
Yes, we do.
That's to seek legal advice from the attorney by any agenda item. Which would be me, right?
You know, section.
It says, as authorized under five-five-one-oh-seven-one, the Texas government code, this meeting may be convened in a closed session for the purpose of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any agenda item.
I'm not seeking confidential legal advice.
Pardon?
I'm not seeking confidential legal advice.
You can have an executive session, cause you don't have one opposed to.
We have an executive session as item twelve unless I'm looking at, um.
Which doesn't say what it is, it's just a placeholder, doesn't identify the subject yet.
So then that means you can't take anything till you have an executive session by your interpretation?
Yes, not my interpretation.
I'm saying, but what you're saying. Yes, thank you.
I think what he's saying is you, you can't take any of these items to executive if it's to ask him questions.
You can ask me legal advice, but you can't deliberate on whether you wanna do or not do something.
Okay, so I'll bring it forward here. So publicly, I wanna know comparatively speaking, how many other attorneys or firms you vetted and cost of peers?
Oh, we vetted one, two, three firms. Um, they're all, from my recollection, they're all about the same price points. Um, there was one, there was one firm that was actually, memory certainly correctly, on hire. I think that the hourly rate was like going at five hundred dollars an hour. But pretty much this is, this is nowadays a going rate for economic development work.
And based on staff's identification of Shelby Law specifically, what's in Shelby Law against whoever else's package you consider?
Um, the fact that we didn't have, uh, conflicts, the fact that there had been a previously, uh, working relationship um, between, uh, Mr. Shelby and Mr. Hager, uh, that they previously collaborated, that's, that's, uh, half the battle. But again, the biggest one is, is conflict. That there wasn't any conflict. And the, the other one, uh, it was capacity. We ran across firms that there wasn't a, um, any conflict. The, the hourly rate was fine, but there was a capacity issue. Uh, as a matter of fact, we, there's one firm that just, um, said they, they just, while they wanted to represent it, they just honestly could not represent us because they just didn't have the manpower. And they, they didn't wanna, they didn't wanna fail the board and said, we're just respectfully gonna take a pass on this opportunity.
And speaking of capacity, do you sort of have capacity? Cause we've had attorneys come and then we're missing, but as Mr. Harvey has indicated, basically you want someone consistently, so do you have that capacity?
I, I believe I do and I respect, uh, Mr. Hager and the, uh, one of the other attorneys that I know, uh, that, uh, Ms. Barrera, Barrera spoke with, uh, and I would not, uh, offer my services up if I didn't think I could do the job because I, I don't want to tarnish their, their recommendation.
That was a whole confident.
Yeah, one hundred percent confident. I was trying to give you the reasons, reason why, reasons why I was confident.
I'm a lawyer, I have to ask questions, alright, thank you.
No, but to, to add to that, there were several, several of the firms that actually we interviewed that asked the type of commitment that this would involve. Cause they didn't wanna, they didn't wanna proceed or consider taking on this type of relationship if they weren't able to provide the services they, they thought were necessary to be provided. Um, so, um, we've had, we had plenty of conversations that were very open, very, the, a number of the firms were actually forthcoming. Uh, very forthcoming and, uh, a number of the firms actually just referred us to others and said, you know what? We're, we, um, we're not the good fit, but we recommend these other firms. You should reach out to them.
Thank you for that. And I think from a Robert's order perspective, I need to withdraw the motion because it was, you know.
Second, yeah.
He did. Uh, well, I still withdraw, it's still up.
Still withdrawn, okay. But it's still under consideration, so we still should consider a motion. If this is for his pleasure on this agenda item.
I believe to, uh, hire the Shelby firm to serve as our attorney.
Okay, so let's say, move, motion for approval of a matter of engagement.
Okay, motion for approval of the engagement between Duncanville, CEDC, and the Shelby Law firm.
I would like to make the second with a little addition that, um, Mr. Shelby is, um, brought up to speed on the volume of projects that we have in the pipeline. We have a lot of things in the pipeline, um, it's the best bit of our town. And, um, you're gonna need to know about what's coming forward and when it's appropriate to share with those things and potentially attend some of our training sessions that I mentioned that's came up to speed. Definitely you're in need of representation. We're gonna move things forward, so I second the motion.
Okay, I believe it's been properly moved and seconded. For the discussion. Alright.
This is almost like telling your ex-wife, so I'm married.
All those in favor, so by saying aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
And those opposed, same side. The motion does carry.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Court, work with it, sir. Okay. Wait, Mr. Ray, we're now at our public hearing portion of the agenda. Okay, item A says conduct public hearing to discuss and consider an agreement with North Texas Care Clinic, infrastructure grant in the amount up to two-hundred-thirty-one thousand dollars. This property is located seven-twenty-seven South Cockroyle Road here in Duncanville, Texas.
It's actually seven-twenty-six.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Ray, so the agenda is seven-twenty-six as opposed to seven-twenty-seven South Cockroyle Road. Do we make that change on that notation in the agenda? Uh, and then authorize the board president to execute necessary documents. Mistake.
Okay, so North Texas Care Clinic, they are actually here as well, so I'll just do this briefly and then if you guys have something that you'd like to present as well. So they have been in Duncanville for over ten years. I'm so sorry, I took over space. They've been in Duncanville for over ten years and they need a larger facility in order to continue providing care for our Duncanville residents. The property is seven-twenty-six South Cockroyle Road. Uh, they're asking for a business retention grant for paint, landscape, uh, signage, the facade, architectural, uh, pavement and some other incentives like, um, mold remediation. Um, their improvements will enhance property value by, uh, estimated fifty percent. Their job creation is about fourteen and this is all based on their application, but their current sales revenue generated is about five hundred thousand with estimated additional revenue to make it up to, uh, a thousand after the expansion. Um, the current real value of the property is nine-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, oop, that was just nine-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars.
I wish it was nine-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars.
But the improvement is, uh, seven-hundred-six-thousand-nine-sixty and the land is two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, a little over two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. So my recommendation was that the grant's not to exceed a total of ninety thousand. But before we get into that, I know that they have some information to share. And one of the reasons why I asked for a lower, uh, amount was just because, or suggested a lower amount was just because, uh, some of the repair was due to deferred maintenance and I thought maybe some of that could be allotted by the tenant, by the, um, the owner. Um, but there's also some bids that we understood were not, were not able to attain because they were such a rare, a rare factor. Um, so did you guys want to? And you might introduce yourselves.
I think I'm up for good, Terry. So, hello, good evening. Um, my name is Dr. Kelly Randall. I am a board certified internal medicine physician. And, and my partner, who, uh, regrettably cannot be here this evening, is, uh, Dr. Terrence Taylor. He's a nurse practitioner, um, and actually started North Texas Care Clinic. It'll be, uh, ten years, uh, in the next few weeks here in Duncanville. Um, he was a resident of Duncanville as well. Actually, his mom still lives here, so we're, we're both in Duncanville quite a bit. Um, so we are currently leasing this space. Previously, it was, uh, a care now and then became a pain management clinic, um, and was abandoned pretty much for the last eighteen months. So North Texas Care Clinic, um, so here's our mission and I'll talk a little bit about how we kinda got to this property. Um, is to basically care for residents. About seventy percent of our patient load comes from Duncanville. Um, even when we tell people we're moving, they're like, you're moving where? Still gonna be in Duncanville, right? So, um, this community is a very niche community, um, especially as far as it goes with healthcare. Uh, a lot of our patients do not leave this corridor to get their healthcare. The vast majority go to Charlton, um, to get their care. So we are credentialed at Charlton so that our plan going forward is to be able to take care of our patients in the community, but then also care for them, um, continually in the hospital setting. So it is our goal to provide care and access for this community. And so it was important for us, um, Dr. Taylor and I have been looking for property in Duncanville for the last three years or more and just have not been able to find the space that we needed. Um, and not been able to find, um, a facility that would work for what we needed without completely gutting, um, the entire structure. Um, and so as luck would have it, we happened to one day just be looking actually for this different property and this popped up out of nowhere. Um, so this is just a little bit about us. We are, um, patient center, um, we care for our patients on their terms. We believe in partnering with our patients and like I said, um, have been in the Duncanville area. Uh, we're literally five minutes away currently now, um, at five-twenty-nine Wheatland. So we're literally going five minutes, um, and plan to take all of our patients with us. So this is our glamour shot. This is myself and Dr. Taylor. Uh, and we are, like I said, established here in twenty-fourteen in the city of Duncanville. We currently have a pa, a panel patient, a patient panel of over seven thousand, um, patients. We have a large payer mix. We see a lot of Medicaid patients, which Duncanville has a lot of. Um, and if any of you are familiar with the landscape of healthcare and where healthcare is going, more people that look like me are not taking Medicaid. Um, they're really going towards concierge medicine and not taking care of patients that have insurance, period. Um, simply because it's not lucrative. We don't get paid or compensated very well for the time that we spend with our patients. So to be in an area that is very Medicare, Medicaid heavy and self-pay heavy, we need providers like myself and Dr. Taylor who are rooted and grounded, um, in this community and want to take care of the patients that live here. So we have a mix, um, a payer mix. We see, the vast majority of our patients are probably gonna be Medicaid, Medicaid, uh, excuse me, Medicaid and commercial. And then we have a smaller segment, we're trying to grow our Medicare population as well. As you know, every city's getting older, so we're going to be seeing a lot more Medicare patients. Presently at our current location, we have two exam rooms. Uh, and so it is very difficult to see that volume of patients, um, in, in a small space. And so we have literally been looking, um, with Michelle now for, what, three, almost two years? That we've been looking for a space. So we currently employ three full-time employees, three part-time. And our, our goal is to increase that to fourteen staff members, um, and provide better service lines. So, um, in doing so, um, we're, we've just recently started doing, um, what's called ABI screenings. So we screen for vascular disease in our patients that are high-risk, are diabetics, um, and so forth. There's a lot of that and so we provide that service now in our office so we don't have to refer out. Um, these smaller communities, although we're really attached to the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex, folks don't wanna go to Dallas. They don't wanna go to, to Fort Worth. They wanna be seen here in our community. They want their specialists to be here in our community. So we're trying to provide as much in-house as we can so that our patients don't have to move all over the city, um, to get specialized care. Um, so we provide, uh, medical weight loss therapy, allergy testing. We're moving into, um, having behavioral health available. It is a desert, um, in this area to get, there's well more folks that need mental health services than we have providers. So that's something that we are providing as well as HIV, um, management. So this is our new location. Um, it looks really pretty in this photo, but it is not the way it looks on a regular basis. We share a parking lot with Legends, um, which is a after-hours spot or a nightclub. And so here's some, um, photos on just any random day when we go by our property. Um, this literally was taken about a month ago. We went to meet one of our contractors and so these are the types of things that we see. So you can see the close proximity, I don't know where the wall, my pointer, there we go. I don't think you guys can see it, but essentially this is our side, this side, our building is here and this is the club. And so this is what our property looks like on any random day. They use our trash receptacle. They will come from the club and toss it over the wall. And so we are not occupied. We have been under a major renovation for the last six months and so we are not currently in the space. So we have to pay, um, to have trash removal. Um, we get citation by the city because tech, well, our owner, our current owner gets citation by the city, um, because these are the types of things that they do. They don't even, they're, the parking lot has beer cans, uh, you name it. We are a club spot. They use our parking lot on the weekends and so we are tasked with having to, um, clean all this up. They also think it is a motor speedway, so they've knocked down our stop sign. There are skid marks through the parking lot on our curb, they've broken areas of our curb. Here's one of those letters I mentioned that, um, goes into detail about how we're going to be fined for the trash that is, uh, you know, accumulating around our property. Here are some of those, um, speed bumps that they dart over. So we have areas of our curb and our parking lot that are damaged because of the high rate of speed, um, that people are, um, using when they move through the parking lot. So we have to repair concrete. We also have to repair our curbs in several locations. Um, and so as I previously mentioned, we are currently renting our space with the, um, end goal of purchasing in the next year. But because of the shape that the building was in, we're dumping so much of our capital into the renovation. Um, so there was a pain management clinic there. It had been abandoned for about eighteen months. So these are the metal seams that actually are on the roof and we had some disrepair there and water was getting and we also had hail damage. Um, and this was again prior to us actually procuring the property. And so we were coming in to kinda just do a little touch-up and make it real nice and pretty. And so we find out there's molds behind the walls, so we've had to completely gut. Um, and that was not what we signed up for, but that is what we have. So there's some pictures coming up of the damage that was done. So this is an aerial view of our property. There's an auto parts, a NAPA auto parts to our right. Um, for those of you who aren't familiar with where we're located, we're actually in the parking lot of, um, the Wenco, but we're on the Cockroyle Hillside. Um, so this is an aerial view, so everything that you see, that copper roof has to be replaced. Um, and so, long story short, a lot of this has had to come. And so, long story short, a lot of this has had to come out of our actual pockets because we didn't own the building prior to. And so we're kind of fighting with insurance to kind of get some of these things done and prove the damages that were done to the property when we were not owners. So this is prior to us doing mold remediation. They actually had wallpaper on top of the wall and then painted over it in order for the pain management folks to get in there. So when we went to remove the wallpaper, because no one paints over wallpaper, this is what we found. So we have had to completely gut our space. We've had mold remediation, lead remediation. Am I forgetting anything else? In that regard, yes, our floors are damaged, so those floors have all had to be removed because it was abandoned for eighteen months. And so this is our vision of where we would like to take this space. Extensive landscaping. Part of our ask is because we are wanting to basically fence ourselves in botanically, if you will, from our neighbors to keep some of their trash from becoming our problem, our problem ongoing. Obviously, for a medical practice, aesthetics matter, and you don't want to come someplace where there's, you know, beer cans and the like. So we are freshening up the facade. We are in the process of replacing that roof. It will look as you see it here. This will be the inside, so we're replacing pretty much everything in the place. All the, we're down to the studs, basically. So our floors are being replaced, door is being replaced. So essentially, everything is having to be redone. And that was not what we envisioned or knew of when we got into the project. So our long-term plan, obviously, is to stay in Duncanville, but that is why we are before you. So just some more graphical pictures of what we're planning to do. And then obviously, this is our new location. And I'm gonna pass it to Michelle to give you a little more detail. She is our project manager on this.
So we understand what Duncanville is trying to highlight in terms of addressing the current needs of the city, to which Kelly has kind of highlighted in terms of their patient load. But we, the clinic will be situated in Opportunity Area One, so we know that the city has a desire to develop and enforce the aesthetics and design standards of the properties that are alongside the sixty-seven corridor. My, I'm actually Michelle Terrell, the Realtor, but soon became the project manager and kind of everything else.
The call for everything.
Right. So I've been trying to do the numbers and keep track of the contractors and some of the work that's related to the property because I did not want to just paint over something that had underlying problems because in the long term, since the doctors do want to keep, retain this second location of theirs, we wanted to make sure that there are no health hazards or risks associated with relocating to that location. One of the grants that was requested was for business retention and expansion. And Kelly can kind of talk about some of the possibility, employment opportunities that will be afforded now that they're going to almost quadruple the size of their current location.
Yeah, so we'll have, right now, we have one nurse that's full-time and two full-time medical assistants, but we are super busy. I mean, literally, every single day, we're seeing four and five new patients a day. Folks that have been looking, you know, specifically in this area to have minority representation as their medical care. And so that's a big driver. We have a lot of folks who their insurances have dropped. Their previous physician or nurse practitioner or what have you, and so they're coming to us for that. And so to be able to service and care for our patients, we need more space, and we need to be able to have more service lines that we provide. So we're looking at providing, we're looking at trying to become a federally funded healthcare center, which Duncanville does not have. Dallas has several, but we would like to start that process here in Duncanville so that we can provide the standard of care for patients who may not be able to afford it. So we all see those wonderful commercials about guardians, but they don't tell you that it's a thousand dollars a month and our Medicare patients can't afford it. So we need a partner and federal backing to do things like that, and that's what we envision for this community, you know, to be able to do those types of things. So we need nursing to be able to do that. We will need our triaging staff to increase in number because we're gonna, like she said, we're going from two rooms to eight. We are also looking at being able to provide some gynecological services in our office that the vast majority of folks who need them are Medicaid. Well, a lot of doctors are not taking Medicaid. Doesn't pay. And they're doing colonoscopies and doing these very advanced procedures, but they're not getting reimbursed for their time. Well, we're a federally funded operation. We've got the patient base, they will come. So we have lots of things that we are envisioning in this bigger space. We just need the space to be able to do it. So you name it. You increase your patient population by two times, you need everything, phlebotomist. You need cleaning staff. We need Michelle. Somebody's gotta help us, you know, manage this property that has a lot of overhead, so.
One of the grants we were asking for was for paint, for painting the exterior of the property, not the interior. The exterior consists of a masonry, so we have to use a special type of paint that will adhere to stucco-like. So we would like to, it's currently kind of an off-white, but we chose the stark white, so it will really offset and tie in with the logo and the signage. The landscaping grant, we actually did a landscaping plan based on your recommendation to kind of show where these will be the holly bushes that are prickly, so we won't have to really worry about people cutting through across our property, but it will be accent it with crepe myrtle trees in the front because if you ever drive past Cockro Hill right now, the crepe myrtles that are currently there, they're half-dead. So we would actually kind of spruce it up with crepe myrtles, hollies, eastern red buds in the front part, some Mexican feather grass, which is like a native Texan plant, some autumn sages, knockout roses and hostas to provide a little bit of color to accent the beauty of the building because it's really a very beautiful building. And we're actually thinking about as well adding some hollies towards the back of the building too because we just want to make sure that people don't encroach upon the property and the premises and hang out just because it's a nice, it's a nice-looking building.
And they're actually parking back there. We actually have truck tracks because when the club gets full, then our parking lot becomes their overflow, and they park behind our building. And so some of our contractors who are there working or come in to double-check and make sure the building is secure at night have actually seen where they'll pull an F-150 up on our curb. So we actually, since we did this plan, thought about just fencing ourselves in with bushes because I doubt you want to drive your truck over, over our bush fence. And so it's aesthetically a better option than putting railing back there, which is what we kind of thought initially, but we are trying to beautify, yes. And so we want it to be appealing. And so we're actually thinking of doing the entire perimeter, really mostly because it's a barrier.
And so part of that landscaping plan will consist of having to do sprinkler system, reevaluate our sprinkler systems, and move it so that we can accommodate the additional landscaping that's there. Signage grant, currently, this is just a rendition of, from, I think it was fast signs. Basically, we would like to add lighted signage on our, at two places. This is a pole sign that's right on Cockro Hill, and this is a signage on the building. So we would like to add our signage there, make sure it's well-lit and well-visible for our customers and patients to come through. The facade and architectural improvement grant, a lot of that deals with the roof itself. Now, some of the pictures you see, Kelly had already shown you, but imagine this metal roofing. We discovered that the mold problem was attributed to the roofing being an issue. The metal seams, this parapet wall is, has a lot of holes and things, and it comes right down to the inside of the building. In addition to the outside copper has been worn due to the sun and just hail damage and things of that nature. So the roof is a tarp and gravel roof. We would like to upgrade it and get away from the tarp and gravel at this point. That is not something that the insurance is willing to cover right now, but we are looking at a newer roofing system to upgrade to in order to not only protect, protect the building, but to be more aesthetically pleasing as well. So we want to change this copper color to blue because that kind of ties in with the color of the, and our logo and things of that nature. In addition, believe it or not, the front doors are not automated, so we're, we are not grandfathered. So what we're proposing is allowing for our patients that have mobile difficulty, some type of ADA compliant motorized opening of the doors. So these are kind of like some of the renditions for the facade and architectural grant, and that's what that would cover. Pavement, as Kelly highlighted, you know, the pavement here, there's some type of divot. So that's kind of would be a tripping hazard to our customers and our patients in addition to possible damage for people who drive in that area. So we would at least repay, this is about fifty square feet of space in addition to replacing this curb because you can't really see it in this picture, but the curb, I guess someone has run up on the curves, or several people have run up on that curb, and it's kind of broken up and things of that nature. So we would like to at least provide pavement as well in the parking lot. And final, the other incentive was really the mold, for the mold remediation. And as you can see, we basically have torn all of this, encapsulated everything that we needed to, taken out the insulation, and what we'll do is re-insulate and then re-sheet rock. And to your point, because I think someone had a concern about whether or not we plan to, when we apply for the grants, whether or not the grants actually get used. Well, we're actually in the process of the construction of the project. So it would definitely be used for any of, for any of these items that it's approved because I'm not really sure what things were taken out, but our original request was closer to three hundred thousand, but after sitting and talking with the Economic Development Committee workers, we did talk about scaling it back some. But I just wanted you guys to see how some of the neglect of the building, you know, is something that we will have to bear. So I do thank you for hearing our presentation at this point.
And I'm sorry, I just wanted to add one thing about future. I forgot to mention this, and this is Dr. Taylor's baby, is that there's really no urgent care facilities in the city of Duncanville. And so that's another service line that we would like to be able to provide. It takes some of the pressure off of Charlton from having to, it is a level two trauma center. Pretty much anything that happens in the southern sector of car accidents, slip and fall, all of that goes there. So it would also kind of decompress their wait times and things like that, and we can provide some of those services. We are adult medicine, but we can do a lot of things in the office. And so that's another one of the things that we are wanting to move towards, is expanding our hours. We're very sensitive to people who are working people. So if they're at work when we're at work, then they get off at five and we get off at five, then who, how do they get care? So we have Saturday hours that we offer, and then as we expand into a bigger space and have a bigger staff, we're planning to offer extended hours so that folks can come after work. So again, keeping the care here in Duncanville. And again, thank you for your time.
Any questions?
Any questions for the applicant or staff?
I just want to thank you for your commitment to this area. And you have a very compelling story. And so I have no doubt that if you will be able to overcome the challenges that you face, and you have a wonderful vision because I'm kind of one of those Medicare.
That's what I'm saying.
I may not look like it, but I am. So I really, really appreciate it. I guess my concern is we can't address it here, but your neighbor. It's so sad. I don't know what you can do other than what you plan to do to do that, but it would really be nice if they would just get a grip.
They're causing us to beef up everything. I mean, I think we didn't even mention this, but we have to beef up our security. We have a whole plan to light the exterior. And again, all things that we didn't anticipate. But yeah, cameras, the whole nine. And so we're hoping that once they see the foot traffic and we're there on a consistent basis, and it's not just the workers, that we can establish some rapport and respect is our hope. I think now it's kind of abandoned, and there's no accountability, there's no faces to it. So our plan, once we are finished, God help us, in December, is to do a bigger and open-ended community event, invite the community, and we want to, you know, this is big for us. This is a legacy thing for Dr. Taylor and myself. You know, so it's a big deal for us and for all those folks that have backed us this far. So we want to make it open. And so hopefully, once they see that, we're taking care of your mom, we're taking care of your grandmother, stop throwing your trash over there, you know. Hopefully, that will help, but time will tell. Until then, we pay for cleanup crews.
And the other thing is, one of the things that I don't get to talk about as much, don't care about much in Duncanville, is that compared to other areas in the metroplex, we have this issue with disposable income and that sort of thing. As you're going through and hiring more people to staff your facility, I encourage you to, encourage them to come live in Duncanville and bring that high salary with them.
A couple of whom actually do live here. They're so excited because they can walk to work. Yeah, we do have a lot of Duncanville ties with our staff. Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Yeah, staff? Mr. McBlack, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay. Our next public hearing agenda item is to conduct a public hearing to discuss and consider an agreement with Premier.
Should we, it's a public hearing, should we allow anyone to comment?
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in favor or in opposition for this agenda item? Feel free to do so. Let's state your name and address for the record. Okay, hearing none. Okay, I'll consider a motion to table this particular public hearing item.
If you're done with the public hearing, you can close it. You really don't have to take a vote.
Okay.
But you can if you'd like. There's no requirement in the law that you do that. Government rules a lot of times dictate that, but. Do you mean English or Spanish?
Close each individual public hearing item.
Yes, technically, because each requires a separate public hearing.
Okay. I entertain a motion to close public hearing for this agenda item with agreement with North Texas Care Clinic. Okay, we have motion. Second, any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of public hearing, so by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed by that same side? Public hearing is closed. All right, our next public hearing item is to conduct a public hearing to discuss and consider an agreement with Premier Property for a facade grant in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars. Property is located at twelve fifteen South Main Street here in Duncanville, and authorize the Board President to execute any necessary documents.
You have a question?
Yeah. Did you take action on, close public?
Public hearing.
No, I don't love a hearing. But I didn't take any formal action on the grant request. I think the applicant just.
So, Dr. Harvey, if you're intent tonight to vote to either approve or not approve this grant, or is it your uh, you want to think about it and give it another meeting, I'm just asking.
Typically, what we do, what we have done historically, precedent is we have our public hearing, our, in our discussion. We table those items, close session, we come out of closed session, we take action. I, I know that, I'm just saying that's what's But I, I'm going to speak for the board, um, we hope you prepare to take action on this item, so. The applicant comes back in, or when our board member comes back in, we'll entertain a motion.
Do you want recess?
Try to catch them before they left the front door.
Any questions for me?
She behind you?
I think she's on, she's in the hall.
Mr. Harvey, since you're running the meeting, you can open the public hearing, close the public hearing without, without a motion.
No, we're closed.
On each of these, you can, you can open the public hearing and then when the public hearing is over, you can close it. And then entertain any motion either to table or to approve or.
Alright, oh, let's entertain a motion to approve or not item A. With North Texas Care Clinic and their infrastructure grant in the amount of two hundred thirty-one thousand dollars.
To approve the grant, your request amount to the care facility. Subject to a written grant agreement executed by the board president who has authorized to sign the same in the app. Exactly what that gentleman said.
Okay.
Are you talking about the grant application amount or the staff recommendation? The staff recommended.
So it'd be two hundred thirty-one thousand dollars. Ninety-four?
That was ninety thousand six hundred eighty-six sixty-seven. But let me, can I make a statement? So the way that the applicant read was, uh, or the application for the signage grant read internal and external signage. But I'm thinking based on the pictures that the internal was the one that's on the building and the external would be the sign pole. We have two, yeah, so one that's actually outside, they're both extra, okay. So I, on signage grant, when it says minus the interior signage, I would recommend that we go ahead and give them the entire amount that they're asking, the original ask. Because the internal was just the one that's up, now I understand. What does that mean though?
So they bring it to thirty-one?
Yes, the signage grant was the signage grant for the original ask, the signage grant was seven thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars. I would say give them the entire seven hundred eighty-six uh for the signage amount. Their total amount was a conga- a, a group of several different grants, if you look in the original ask. And so that's what I was referring to as far as the signage grant by itself, like yes, give them the amount. Now that I understand the internal, this means inside, it means.
How much, how much money a grant is for what?
So the total ask was two hundred twenty-nine, eight hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. The thirty thousand was for the business retention expansion grant. The seven thousand eight hundred was for a paint grant. And I'm reading from the staff report, the sixteen thousand four hundred twenty-five was the landscape grant. Seven thousand eight ninety-six was the signage grant. Hundred forty-nine, two sixty-two is the facade and architectural grant. And a four thousand five hundred was a pavement grant. And a fourteen thousand was an other incentive mold remediation. That was the ask. My recommendation, based on there was no tenant allowance that I could see and thinking that the mold um remediation was something that should have been taken care of by the landlord, um, although it's much needed. Um, my recommendation was ninety thousand six hundred eighty-six sixty-seven. What I was saying was to amend that to add, let me check that one here. The total amount of the, of the signage request.
What? But someone's got to write the grant agreement, what is that for? What is the ninety thousand represent?
What is the ninety thousand for?
For regulation, that page two of two here?
Yeah, it's on page two.
No one sent me page two, so I have no idea. If someone needs to make the motion, give a grant in the amount of ninety thousand dollars for agent signage. What those key amounts are landscaping, so that when they
She's not going to be the exact amount. Oh, I see what you're saying though. The breakdown?
I don't know what you want to give, do you want, you traditionally have not given just ninety thousand dollars instead of fix some of the stuff. So you normally say you get ninety thousand dollars and fifteen is going to go to landscaping, seven is going to go to sign. Four thousand five hundred is going to go to paving, so that's the detail that you need.
Okay, does that include everything, you need six eighty-six?
Yeah, it's just ninety thousand six hundred eighty-six.
Paint, signage, and infrastructure.
There's full sign.
Add the signage right in there.
So now it's another seventy?
The number with the added sign is ninety-eight, five eighty-five, sixty-seven.
Ninety-eight.
Nine, ninety-eight, five eighty-five, and sixty-seven cents.
What are, what are the subcategories of grants?
He wants the subcategories.
I want a broken down so I can write the grant agreement. So give him thirty for business retention, the grant, eighteen, seven eighty. Sixteen, four twenty-five for landscaping, there's seven eighty-nine sixty for signage.
We are giving him the top part.
You're not giving him the whole thing.
And today, will you save the ninety-eight and they have to tell you later or do we need to break it down?
It's almost broken down, why don't, why don't, why don't, why don't you read into the record what you've got? And then whatever the difference is will be the facade grant, right? So, ninety-eight?
Ninety-eight, five eighty-five, point six seven.
Broken down.
Ten thousand, two eighty-six, eighty-six landscaping, seven thousand four, six eighty-one signage. Sixty-eight, four ninety-three, facade and architecture. Forty-five hundred dollars per payment, repair slash replacement for the property.
And then there's a retention grant in the amount of thirty thousand. Is that to be spent on?
That's not included.
That was not included.
That's not included.
Got the motion.
I'll second Mr. Harvey's motion with a clarification that if the signage amount does not equal the ninety-eight thousand five eighty-five, that, that is the corrected area. To make sure it all, all numbers balance.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Okay, no further discussion, all those in favor, vote by saying aye. And those opposed by that same sign? Okay, that motion still carries.
We want to make you chase us down.
You know, the judge told me one time, when you win, leave. Quit talking, you're winning.
Okay, alright, conduct a public hearing to discuss and consider an agreement with Premier Properties for a facade grant in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars. Property located at twelve fifteen South Main Street here in Duncanville. And authorize the board president to execute necessary documents. We entertain a motion, open this public hearing. We got a motion, do we have a second? Okay, so we got motion, second? Yes, open the public hearing for item B, all those in favor, we say aye. And opposed? Public hearing is over.
This particular property um is, um, excuse me, I'm sorry, Premier Properties, they've been in Duncanville for over twenty years. Uh, this is a property off Main Street, um, do we have a representative from Premier Properties? Okay, so they're asking for a paint, um, asphalt and signage grant request. So I, after talking to them and looking at what they were going to do, they were actually going to paint the building, the, the trim, the exact same color that it already is, the burgundy color, and the recommendation is, and after I talked to them, they said it makes sense to paint the exterior, the entire exterior a lighter color, a brighter color, so it will stand out from Main Street. And then do some um landscaping on the exterior on the street side, and they did agree to that. So this is Premier's Properties, they did get their bids. Um, that's the, that's the property with the burgundy and their original plan is to repaint the burgundy the exact same color. Um, like I said, after a discussion, we talked about painting the brick and or adding uh a, a mural or something to the side to add some, some color and to make it pop from Main Street. Uh, the paving, they also want to get some paving uh done from the, from the um parking plot place and some striping. They're saying that hasn't been done in many years, they wanted to update that as well. And the signage is fading and old as well, so that was their request.
Did we save the applicants here?
No, no.
Staff, or any questions for staff regarding this?
Did the application include the parking lot striping? Just this facade?
Uh, no, it did not.
So does the eighty-five thousand include the striping?
Let me withdraw this, I don't mean, I let me apologize, let me withdraw this, this is not exactly what she and I had discussed. After she submitted her application, we had a conversation and there were some bids also that need to be sent that we don't have on here. So I'm going to ask that we withdraw this item.
Do, do you want to go ahead and continue the public hearing to the next table that's the next?
I'd like, I'd like to continue if we can, then we don't necessarily have to make a motion to take action. Okay, I, I do have some comments, I want to make sure the board doesn't have any useful discussion that you can also take with you. Okay, before I start, go around the table, any, any, any comments or thoughts to the, the application or the proposal as submitted currently?
This may sound a little bit petty, but if you want eighty-five thousand dollars, you should show up.
In their defense, uh, I do believe this was uh not their original request, so.
So I had a, a comment, question for staff, so when we think about this property located along, we'll say that's south stretch of Main Street. You know, not, not the northern part of Main Street where we really have seen some investment along that corridor. Whether it's facade, whether it's true public infrastructure. So when I think about the opportunity of investing in the property along Main Street, one, I think it's important for us to understand what existing public right of way we might have along, because we have some the properties along that stretch of Main Street, they're not contiguous in terms of like the setbacks, for example, from the street, right? And so if we were to pull up D-CAD's map, for example, right, and look at the parcel outlines, it, it too is not condi- contiguous in terms of what's the public right of way, whether it's parcel and I know we probably have easements because there's some water lines, you can see the hydrants, but you know, the opportunity not just to improve the building facade, but the pedestrian environment along Main Street, right, we're getting ready to go into this comprehensive plan. Right, I, I, I would expect that Main Street will continue to be a focal point, right? And so maybe then this property ends up being an opportunity for us to, um, you know, do a catalyst project with respect to what maybe was being proposed infrastructure wise, whether it's to improve the sidewalk and pedestrian pathways, whether it's to enhance stormwater drainage or lighting, so if we're going to take a bite at this apple and, and, and we have a existing business, there's one that makes some investment in property and it's along Main Street and they're asking for money, I'd like to include maybe, if necessary, the acquisition of some public right of way as part of that, so that then we have what we need when we are looking to expand or enhance Main Street, because that has to be done regardless if we don't have it. Like, that's going to be a whole arduous process of getting right away from those existing owners. We got one at the table that wants to do business, okay, let's see what we need. And they might be involved in our public work staff, I, I don't know, but I think maybe let's include that conversation with the application and not feel rushed if they aren't.
Appreciate it, okay, thank you.
So we'll close the public hearing for this item. Before we do that, is there anyone here to speak in favor or in opposition for this agenda item? Okay, hearing done, we can close this public hearing.
I think most should close the public hearing.
Okay, motion. Promptly move this second, close the public hearing, all those in favor? And opposed? Thank you.
There's a staff question. Did we get clarification on how many parking spots that would be generally created or outlined in this thing and is there any fire lanes or anything? And is there any fire lanes or anything that need to be addressed for the fire department?
Uh, I don't have that information, but we definitely can get that and have that, uh, available for the next presentation.
I'm thinking that if we had a second plan of the, the paint scheme, that would answer those questions.
The striping plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll get that and we'll include that in your packet.
Yeah, I think that would be beneficial, because I think the, when you look at the parking lot, it, it's very convoluted where, where to park and how to park, and if there's handicapped spots, if there's a requirement for that, it'd be nice for um, that to be really outlined, and I think that would be a beautification to this property, which would help Main Street quite a bit.
We'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next public hearing item C. To conduct a public hearing to discuss and consider an agreement with Matt Balki for an infrastructure grant in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars at two twenty North Main Street here in Duncanville, and to authorize the board president to execute necessary documents. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing for this agenda item.
So moved.
Moved and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Okay. Public hearing is open.
All right, good evening, thank you. Uh, so this evening, what you have up for consideration is, uh, for grants in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, two twenty North Main Street is the property address. This property is located on the east side of Main Street, across the street from, uh, the old Ben Franklin Building on the south, on the south side, many know what it is, uh, currently the TB Repair Shop. Um, we have, uh, the owner here, Teresa, um,
Brian.
Brian. Um, the owner, uh, looking to retire, and as part of that, look at this, sell the, uh, to sell the property. Uh, there's, property is currently under contract, and the intended use, at least for a portion, a good portion of the building is for a restaurant, Encino Restaurant. So in your packet, I've provided you with, uh, with the build-out, proposed build-out drawings for the restaurant seating area. Uh, e- uh, seating area and exterior facade improvements, uh, as if you recall, this property is, uh, is the former, um, fire station. And so in these drawings, what you will see is that the, uh, some of the character of the building has been, um, preserved or is being preserved as part of this build-out, oh, excuse me. Battery is going a little low here. There we go. Sorry, I went too fast, I apologize about that. So you're looking at the, at the character of the building and some of the history being preserved here, uh, identifying as the former fire department, the iconic, uh, building, but again, providing the, uh, street with some, with some flavor, some flair, and providing an, an open concept, um, dining experience. This would be, um, a second restaurant. Uh, the first Encino Restaurant is located in Dallas. Uh, this evening, you have the restaurant owner that is available to answer your questions regarding this proposed, uh, proposed project, this proposed endeavor. Uh, again, I'm available to answer any questions the board has regarding this, uh, grant request.
So, Mr. Matt?
Yes, that's me, Matt Balki.
Okay.
Thanks. Yes.
Hey, thank you, thank you for your interest in Duncanville.
Thank you for entertaining our crazy idea.
Oh, I, 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 uh, I'm excited about it. I think it will work out quite well. I, I love restaurants, but I never worked in one. So you have one in Dallas?
Yes.
And so, uh, what do you envision it would be like to actually manage these two restaurants now?
Part of it is trusting the staff, so for, we, uh, originally bought the restaurant that we're currently in, in, uh, well, Matt Balki, six fourteen West Davis, Dallas, Texas, seven five two zero eight. Uh, we bought the restaurant in February of twenty twenty. So like that perfect timing, uh, right before it shut down. Uh, and then, um, you know, open to twenty-five percent capacity, uh, we put all of our personal money into it. Uh, no investors, so, you know, it was a, it was a big leap, uh, obviously in a very scary time. Uh, got all the way to, you know, Valentine's Day, eight hundred reservations, and as somebody said, icepocalypse happened, and we lost seven hundred of the eight hundred over the weekend, so we'd actually, you know, at that point, we were just so beat, and we're like, you know, let's just, let's figure out a way to exit before we go further deep, and then, uh, the next week, we won best new restaurant. Uh, and I think people were ready to get out, and we kept growing and growing, we added a second brunch service, uh, that put a lot to the bottom line. Uh, I won best chef in Dallas in twenty twenty-two. Uh, we cracked the top fifteen best restaurants in Dallas. Uh, best brunch, best burger, uh, so it's just like the awards kept coming, the people kept coming, and um, you know, as of last month, we're debt-free. Uh, so it's been, it's been a very long four years, just celebrated our four-year, uh, October eighth. So majority of our staff, I think we have twenty-two, uh, twenty have been there since we opened. So it's like a good retention, we have a great neighborhood presence. Um, we, you know, we support our staff, so, you know, two restaurants. So obviously, they always say the second one's the hardest. I trust and believe in the staff that we have currently in the restaurant to continue operations as, you know, as if we were there, so you know, this is a, it'd be a fun new project, it'd be something, you know, that we are excited about. Uh, so that's, you know, I would believe that we would be able to easily, you know, do it. We, we are both restaurant people, we've met Monty, uh, at Smoke at the Belmont Hotel when he owned it, and um, he always loved the way that we operated, uh, that restaurant. And so now he's a visitor of ours in Oak Cliff, and, uh, so when he brought us this opportunity, you know, it was, you know, trusted friends, so, you know, we're, we're here to make the leap.
Well, I, I can tell you, I, I've known Monte for several years, and I have a lot of respect for Monte. And I can remember Monte always talking about how you can build wealth from within your community. And, and so, uh, and to hear you say that, uh, he was responsible for bringing you over here, uh, that I consider very significant, so you've obviously got a good culinary atmosphere, a good employee atmosphere, twenty out of twenty-two still with you.
It's tough in this business.
Yeah, that is, that is.
It's tough in any business, but the restaurant, you know, is, is, uh, it's open to keep down, but it's, you know, I obtain it to the way we take care of our staff, and we take care of our guests, and the guests take care of our employees, I mean, it's a very neighborhood-centric restaurant, and we currently own it, you know, we envision the same for here.
So I'm, I'm excited about the possibility of being a small part of your story.
But it's.
Opening up this second restaurant here in City of Champions.
It'd be fun to make it a treasured story, so we're, we're excited.
That's all I have.
Uh, how does our comprehensive plan look at the Main Street vision? I mean, have they given any guidance that you've heard, that you've been here and know? It's kind of a fresh subject for you.
Yeah, at this time, we're not that far along in the comprehensive plan to talk about, you know, looking at quarters that will be one of our quarters that we, that we look at and recommendations being, being provided. But this is, uh, definitely along the lines of what we want, uh, Main Street to, to be, you know, and to bring more foot traffic to, uh, to that quarter, to that area, hopefully attracts even, uh, other restaurants, other investments, you know, in the vicinity.
Uh, question for you, uh, how does, being in the restaurant business, how do the neighboring restaurants help and hurt your business? You have Roma's, it's been there for a long time, very dedicated staff, there's been the Asian Place, it's had a little bit of turnover, there's another place that's vacant right now, I guess, how does that help or hurt you going forward?
So where we're located is in Bishop Arts, so most everybody knows Bishop Arts. It is a, uh, you know, several restaurants, bars, music venues. And what it does is, you know, it, one, it keeps us on our toes, is trying to provide, you know, for our restaurant community, um, and then it also, you know, it draws people in. If there's just one restaurant, you know, whatever, but if there's multiple restaurants, that gets people there, so people will come have dinner with us, they'll go down into Bishop Arts, and they'll go, you know, see a live band, they'll go shopping, so it's, it's like creating a little, like having multiple restaurants in the same area. Uh, you know, has, we've always seen it work best in just an isolated, you know, solo spot. And then it's also, you know, it's great to have neighbors that are in restaurants, you don't have paper towels, you know, we have nine different people to go pick them up from, so it's just, you know, uh, meeting your neighbors, growing with them, helping them out, you know. We trade recipes all the time in the business, so, or, you know, send people to, you know, hey, I just had a great lunch over at Roma's, you know, we should go meet there, just, it's multiple restaurants and, and bars in good location, you know, it just creates a, a, an area that, uh, you know, people will visit.
So can I translate it to be a complimentary business in the Duncanville area?
Yes.
As far as hurt your, where there's limited amount of money coming in, that do we do pasta, or do we do whatever matrays you're offering here, it complements the folks as far as?
Yeah, and, and options in the restaurant business is always great, I mean, there's, you know, one day you may want a smash burger, the next you may want a chicken fried steak, or, you know, one day you may want Indian, so I think that, you know, uh, with our menu, uh, it's a little bit of everything, so we wouldn't really infringe on Roma's or any of the taco spots that are close by. You know, ours would be a little bit more, you know, family-oriented, um, you know, a bar that's in there, clean lines, you know, just a, a, a fun space, uh, you know, kind of like what we do in Bishop Arts right now.
And the parking in that area, very good for you guys and everything that's in that area?
Yes, it, it, the space next to it, uh, I mean, there's plenty of parking there, so it, it would be, uh, it would be, you know, easily doable for a busy service.
Any others? Okay, anyone wish to speak in favor or opposition for this item? Feel free to do so.
Yeah, I just wanna speak here, I'm Monty Anderson, twelve ten Green Leaf, and, um, I just wanted to, to realize what we have here tonight, I mean, this is like, this is like the tops we, we have and in Bishop Arts, and like in all of Dallas also, and it's, he first came along, wanted, I wanted him to go into Wheaton Plaza, and he said, I'm not going anywhere else where I can't own my property. So not only is he a, he's not gonna be a renter here, he's gonna be an owner occupant here, own it by himself. I don't own any of the property with him or any of his restaurant, I'm just helping put the deal together, but that's, I think that's real important. I've just known these guys for a long time, Cory and I worked side by side at Belmont and Smoke for a number of years, done huge numbers, huge numbers over there, and Matt came and went, and so I've known, I've got a long history with them. The quality, Matt, when he, it's one thing I like about Matt, when he, when you go to Encino, today, you see Matt cooking. You see him back there, and you can see his kitchen back there. And Matt watches you eat your food, and the expression on your face, to know whether you like the food, or that's the kind of people we, we're getting here, I mean, this is like top-notch and stuff.
We like to call it the fork point, then someone will take a bite, they'll just point at it with your fork, and that's just like an instant gratification, uh, you know, that a restaurant provides.
And they're going from a hundred thousand dollars on the tax rolls here, you know, to a million three, you know, nearly four hundred dollars a square foot. It's probably, one of the reasons for the grant request is getting appraisals and all that kind of stuff, it's tough to get, and it's, it's vital, and you as a partner, it's vital to make this happen, and I just appreciate your consideration, hopefully you'll do it, do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I follow up?
Yes, still.
So, uh, I can remember the TB repair business. And I was, I was in disbelief when the TB repair closed. I know I have been to that TB repair shop ten times if I move. And so I'm very happy that we have a quality business to come in to replace the quality business that was there. So I just feel lucky, I oughta go buy a lot of TBs sometime.
Well, it will be, again, it will be, the shape is gonna be there, and the form, in fact, I have the old historical book here, the fire station here with me tonight. What it, and it won't, this form will be there, 'cause that was the first fire station in Duncanville, that was the first fire station. And so it'll, but it's gonna have to be completely gutted. With all the sewerlands, everything inside, everything, everything. And then if you notice, it sets back, you talk about the setbacks, I think that's real important on Main Street. The setbacks, that where it's, right now, where, that's the patio out front that can be an enclosed patio. So the overhead doors will resemble the old fire department doors. And, I mean, we could even put Fire Department One, you know, nineteen forty, nineteen forty out there, so you'd know, you know, where, where it came from, so we got some really good photos of the, of the fire.
I wanna know if you're a sort of rural architect.
There will be some, some funny ties to the fire.
We can name it after the old fire team.
I'm sorry, what?
We can name it after the old fire team.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Or his wife, Kutsi.
Okay. Will entertain a motion, if there are any further comments, to close the public hearing.
Close, move to close.
Okay, motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you. Okay, now, we should consider a motion. To approve infrastructure grant agreement, right? With Matt Balki, for infrastructure grant, the amount of up to three hundred thousand dollars. Two twenty North Main Street, Duncanville, Texas.
Okay, I, I.
Before just make a motion, just one. Sorry.
Slow my road.
I just wanna share with, uh, with the board that unlike the other grant requests, this grant request, uh, that you have before you is an upfront requ- request, it's not a reimbursement, it's an upfront request, so, uh, we will need to work with uh, council to work out a mutually acceptable agreement on how to proceed, uh, with this grant request, and make sure that the items that are set to be needed the money for, that they're done, and we're holding, when we talk about, when we talked earlier about accountability, then make sure that the money goes where it, it's said it's gonna go to.
Okay.
Does the board gain any feelings on how they'd like to do that? The applicant, I mean, you can do it as a draw request.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, maybe like, like a strikes and project where we'll, uh, draw down.
How much, how much drawn out?
Certain phases, rough end, middle, cool.
Applicant?
Yeah, I say, I can.
Yeah, Monty.
So I would suggest you do this, we did this. Main station, the money would go into the lender, he's got a lender. The money would go to the lender, and the lender would re, make the rec, you know, make the draws as, as he.
And help fund.
Fund the, fund the, uh, 'cause the lender needs the money, and you'd put the money in the bank, then the draws would be looked at with the lender. We have a tri-party agreement up.
Yeah, that way you get the benefit of, of the banker doing your, uh, administration, so.
That's right.
Do, does that have to be stated in a motion? Does that have to be stated in a motion? Yeah, just say approved as deformed to the board's attorney, and I. You can't give it to any word. I, I understand, make a motion to approve the application in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars authorized the president to sign after approval of an agreement as deformed by the board attorney. Exactly what he said.
Okay, young motion. Young second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, and signed? Okay, that motion also carries. Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you. I hope to have a mouth on my cheek. Sit quick.
I'm, I'm in on a soft opening.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, our next agenda item is another public hearing, right? This one to discuss and consider an agreement with Veronte Harris Studio, a landscape grant in the amount of up to ten thousand five hundred dollars. Property is located eight oh seven South Main Street, Duncanville, Texas. South Main Street, Duncanville, Texas, seven five, one three seven, and authorize the board president to execute any necessary documents. So the motion to open this public hearing. Okay, publicly move the second, all in favor? Pose, thank you. Yeah, we are, sorry.
I'm sorry, I have technical difficulties with the battery here.
Okay.
Um, no one is here from Ferrante Harris Studio, this is, uh, off Main Street as well, uh, they actually asked for, uh, a landscaping request uh, for, for two thousand five, um, it's right off Main Street, uh, again, originally when they came by, they, um, were just going to do some minor landscaping, but after staff discussed with him, them, the impact of their landscaping to the street, we decided to do a little bit more, so they're going to do a lot more, which you're seeing in these pictures here, than what they originally requested, because we want that impact to the street. This is going by so fast, this is kinda, this is on the, this is on the inner part of it, by the way, so that's not, that's just on the sidewalk going to the, um, this is on the sidewalk going to the door, but they're really wanting to put the larger pieces out here toward the front, by the, um, by the street area, so that you can see it. And, uh, they've been in business, uh, since two thousand two, August of two thousand two, they've been in Duncanville, uh, so that's over, uh, twenty years, and, uh, recommendations to approve the request, request on to see ten thousand five for landscaping.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board going in this application? Okay, um, I don't know if we have any satellite images of the building, but similar to the other property, this is that same corridor of Main Street, even on that same side of the street, and so, again, you would want to have some thought or conversation with the property owner or, or tenant about, well, just, just us as a staff or organization having an understanding, do we have the necessary public right of way from the street, harbor back, um, before doing an infrastructure grant, you know, whether it ends up being landscaping and facade, you know, a little bit being actual infrastructure, except maybe if we're paving or striping, but again, that improvement certainly would be an improvement to, to these properties, but I don't know then if we missed the opportunity to, if we need to, you know, acquire any public right of way from the sidewalk, and it's pretty narrow sidewalk on that side, really both sides of the streets, and then sandwiched in between some of the auto repair shops, you know, if they're parking right up to the sidewalk, you know, what that looks like. Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, and then, and then there's also the adjacent building, and then, and so, there may exist an opportunity for that property owner to the, to the south to do a mutual access agreement, where if we're, we need right of way that may take out some of their parking right in front of the building, is there an opportunity with the adjacent property owner to carve out mutual access agreement, so that they don't necessarily lose any net parking, but we're giving what we need long term, as, hey, Main Street right now is dark, it's hazardous to pedestrians, if we wanna widen and improve it, we gotta have public right of way from these private property owners, so maybe this is our opportunity, now that they're at the table, to, to start those discussions, since we're, you know, considering the grant. That's the only comment I have, any, any additional thoughts, this one, is there anyone who wish to speak in favor or opposition for this agenda item? Okay, hearing none, you take a motion to close the public hearing for this item.
Move to close.
Second, okay, all those, all those in favor?
All right, okay.
Mr. Hardy?
Same, okay, so, we need a motion to take any action with respect to this agenda item? If we so please.
I'll make a motion for the ten thousand five hundred for landscaping, it's an area that, uh, is in dire need of some beautification, and I think, um, um, with the long tenure of this business in there, it's an area that duly, we appreciate it.
I have a question, just for the record, what are we paying?
Landscaping.
Yeah, wow, that's kinda broad, are you paying for that, just in the front, or landscaping on the side?
It was on the side, too, too.
And then you see a landscaping.
There's a landscaping plant.
Yeah, there's a landscaping plant in your package. And it does show the front and the sides. Everything on that plant.
Everything for the plant.
Yes, everything for the plants.
For the plant.
For the plants.
For the plant.
So it's, it's the green, and is there irrigation that's been put into it, or is that just plants?
It's just plants.
The ground cover?
The irrigation.
Yes, just, just the landscape.
Reimbursement?
Yes. Reimbursement.
That motion?
Second.
Okay, first motion, and it's been seconded, all those in favor, so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose?
Me.
Nay? Motion still carries, so. All right, uh, final public hearing for agenda item E, just conduct the public hearing to consider, to discuss and consider a sponsorship for the First Christian Church Concert with the Master's Voice Quartet, benefiting the Duncanville Outreach Ministry, brought to two thousand seven hundred dollars, located at two zero three South Main Street, Duncanville, Texas, seven five, one three seven, and to authorize the board president to execute any necessary documents. Entertaining a motion to open public hearing.
Salute.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, pose, same sign.
So we do have Ms. Faulkner here, um, to represent, this is a request for a big sponsorship of two thousand seven hundred dollars for a musical event that is, uh, free to the public, it's located, the event will take place at the First Christian Church on two oh three South Main Street, is free and open to the public, um, and is helping the Duncanville Outreach Ministry by collecting canned goods, um, recommendation is to approve the sponsorship with a few conditions as, making sure that the D C D C and city logo, of course, are on, are all, I can't, are on all, um, um, advertis, I can't type for some reason, excuse me, advertisements, and that, uh, uh, maybe work with the city departments and see who can gather the most canned goods, uh, within the city, um, to help promote, uh, outreach, and work with other businesses as well.
Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here, and Ms. Faulkner is here, so Ms. Faulkner, if you'd like to answer any questions.
I can answer any questions, this is an ongoing project that we have, and, uh, it's a good opportunity, this group is, uh, na- nationally known, and they've just fresh off of the National Quartet Convention out of Tennessee, um, they have a new Christmas program, so we thought this would be a great, open up the Christmas season, uh, offer the free concert, we don't charge any ticket prices, but we do ask people to bring non-perishable items that we're doing, we work closely with the Duncanville Outreach on a weekly basis, anyway, and so this is just an opportunity in December to kinda boost up their stock of non-perishable food items.
May I ask you a follow-up question?
Sure.
The people that attend, uh, where do they come from?
Okay, uh, they do have their own groupie following people, uh, that come and follow them across the country, uh, so, there, I don't know the exact number of those, but I know that they've been there, they were there last year, or surely be here this, excuse me, this year, so they'll be traveling in, the group is based, uh, out of Oklahoma, close to Tulsa, uh, I forget the name of the place right now, but, uh, there'll be people from Oklahoma that are gonna come down and go to the concert too, and there are other people across the state that will travel in just for the chance to see them locally.
Okay, so, so they'll come from definitely outside of Duncanville?
Definitely outside of Duncanville.
Different parts of the state, even the country.
There, yeah, there, possibility, we do, they do have people that follow them wherever they go.
Well, I'm kinda, I'm kinda partial to quartet singing myself, that's what it sounds like.
Yeah, it is, it is, and they have a new, they have one new member of their group, and they have a new Christmas program this, this year, so this will be exciting to hear them.
And when is it again?
It's December the second, first, first Monday of, uh, December, so, just as the Christmas season is starting.
Thank you.
Mr. Barrera?
Sure.
I would be remiss, I'd like to remind you of the First Amendment of the Constitution, where it says that the government shall make no law to either establish or prevent the free exercise of religion. This is awfully close to the establishment, extra government money being used to support a Christian effort.
There, there will be no.
I have said my piece, and I shall make.
So there won't be any, there's not gonna be any preaching, our pastor will probably not even get up on the stage at all, so, it, it's just, the group's gonna come in, and they're gonna sing their songs, they'll talk about their, their own, uh, membership and what, and what they do, but they don't, is, there's not gonna be any call, there's not gonna be anything religious.
Is, but do they do like a variety of music, 'cause I mean, you talk about bombshell quartet, that covers a lot of territory.
Yeah, this, this is more, uh.
I think it's more bluegrass.
It's more, uh, country, uh, country.
Andrew music.
Yeah, yeah, so, so it won't be all just one type of music after another, after another, after another.
It's gonna be mostly Christmas, and, uh, you know, some of it's gonna be popular, favorite, you know, Christmas music, and some of it will be uh, Christian in nature, but it won't be, it's not, we're not trying to, we're not trying to deliver a big message, we're not trying to proselytize anybody, but we would like to fill up the, but we would like to fill up the sanctuary.
So I understand that the benefit is to the Duncanville Outreach Ministry.
Yes.
Specific purposes what?
To, to fund, to help stock the shelves at Duncanville Outreach for the Christmas season, because, you know, there are a lot of people who need help.
Food benefit.
No, I'm just saying, I just wanted it on record on what, yes, the purpose of this is to benefit, and that should be our focus.
Yeah, it is our focus, and we have, we, we help them every week, we do big milk and egg ministry to Duncanville Outreach, and uh, we have people who donate specifically goods, we actually started a new thing a couple of weeks ago, a few, well, a month ago, maybe, uh, we actually collect bags of stuff to make a birthday cake for kids, because, you know, their families are, you know, hard pressed to get groceries, so we make little gift bags that have cake mix, icing, birthday candles, a card, napkins, so they can have up their own little birthday celebration, and the parents don't have to worry about, so we're, we're making these bags, and we've given them thirty bags already, uh, that kind of stuff, and we're continuing that, we have probably almost twenty or twenty-five bags, another twenty or twenty-five bags ready to take over.
Your recipients are Duncanville residents?
Yes, yes, yes.
I have a question, so, um, the event's gonna be held at the church, in, in the church, correct?
Yeah, it's gonna be in the sanctuary.
The, if we were to make a, a, a war, the check would be payable to who?
To the Master's Voice.
To who?
To Master's Voice Quartet.
You're underwriting the.
Yeah, so.
And they have not raised their prices for us in several years.
Okay, so Masters Group is an entity that is not part of the church?
No, they're not part of our church.
Are they a part of any church?
Well, I'm sure they are in Oklahoma. But I don't know which church they go.
I mean, not as individuals, I think, go to a church, but are they sponsored and out of the church, or are they just their own nonprofit?
This, this is their own, this is how they make their living, is going around singing in different places.
Okay, so are they, um, I guess, are they some sort of LLC or partnership or anything like that, or they have a corporation of themselves, or is this, is just a group of folks that have gotten together and said, hey?
They've been, they've been singing for twenty years that I know about.
They've been singing, but are they a corporation or?
I don't know if they're a corporation, I, we'd have to look if they're, they have a webpage. For, for them, and then be sure, you have to find Masters Voice Quartet, 'cause there's another Masters Group out there, out of California.
And, um, are, are you partnering with any of the local, uh, nonprofit groups, or the club, Lions Club, to do this event?
Well, the only thi, well, no, we don't really partner with anybody else, um, we've just recently, you know, started asking for help, uh, because as most churches, uh, we're getting older, and we're mostly on Medicare, so, um, we, we've just seeking help to help pay for their, their trip down here, they have a big bus, they bring all their own equipment, and they've been a bit, you know, they've had this group, it's pretty much stayed the same for the last fifteen years that I know about.
A question for Mr. Hager, do, do you know if we've ever, the city has ever supported Duncanville Outreach Ministries in the past?
I don't personally know, I know, apparently this was funded last year out of Coming Team by Mr. Barrera's predecessor.
So, do we still have?
I, I don't know, I don't know of any direct payment from either the city, or the E D C, or the use of any kinda odd funds, or any other funds directly to the this ministry, uh, Outreach Ministry.
And does the, the twenty seven hundred fall under his, the director's, uh, the approval spending limits?
I think it's under twenty five. Is it three now? So the answer would be yes.
I, I would just say, this is a perfect example of how, you know, we spend ninety-eight percent of our time in our applications, therefore, economic development activity in some way, but it's also a community development corporation, right? And sometimes those entities, those cost of benefit, those return on investment, only as, aren't always as visible, but I would say, this is an example of one where it truly is gonna be a benefit to an outreach, community organization that's providing pantry items to members of our community, so I think it's one of the few opportunities that we do get to fund and carry out that mission or component of our corporation. So, uh, with that being said, I wanna turn a motion, well, first, let me say, is there anyone who wish to speak in favor or opposition of this grant application, please do so.
Patricia Ebert, one one five South Greenstone Lane, Duncanville, seven five, one one six, it's a noble venture, but I think we have over a hundred church. It's a noble venture, but I think we have over a hundred churches in Duncanville. And I personally live in a pretty nice home in a pretty nice neighborhood, but I don't pay enough taxes property for the city to come in and do this. And I shop here, but my income doesn't allow me to have, to spend thousands and thousands of dollars in Duncanville. And so, if we have a hundred plus churches and they all come for twenty-seven hundred, I, I, my heart is in it, but my pocketbook can't help you. I think it's just a trend, it's a noble venture, but it's a trend that I would caution against.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not.
Can I say something? I think it's important to know that your, uh, your logo is gonna be displayed, because you do have a, you're allowed to spend a certain amount of funds on advertising.
That's right.
And, uh, I think this would be one of the, if you choose to do it, uh, that would, that might be the budget line item that it comes out of is advertising.
And we did do that last year on all of our flyers. We did put your logo on all of our flyers.
Okay. Any comments for the board? If not, we entertain a motion to close the public hearing for this agenda item.
Second.
Good move, and second, all those in favor? Close, same side, okay. Public hearing is closed. I think we should now entertain a motion, right, to approve or deny the grant application for sponsorship for the First Christian Church Concert with the Masters Voice Quartet benefiting the Duncanville Outreach Ministry on an amount up to two thousand seven hundred dollars. That event will take place in two oh three South Main Street here in Duncanville, Texas, seven five, one three seven. And then also authorize board president to execute any necessary documents. We entertain a motion, if there is one to be made.
Okay, so I will make the motion in a light red check, you just state.
Would that be as in advertising as suggested by your new lawyer?
Yes, yes, to advertise, uh, the event, uh, throughout, nah, I'm not going to advertise, to advertise.
You're an advertiser, sponsoring.
Advertising sponsorship, yeah.
Okay, we got a motion. End of second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, okay. Been properly moved and seconded, right? All those in favor, do so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same side.
Opposed.
I'm staying.
Okay.
Three to one. Extension counts, if both in favor of.
Okay, that motion does carry. Okay, I'll consider a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second, third, fourth.
Anybody up, say aye, aye, aye.